No. I said no, and it's what time, 5:30? What did I do here?
Absolutely. And even better. They're after holiday. All right, you ready?
The special meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Ritzup?
Here.
Director Mawlin?
Here.
Director Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director Whitehorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Director Cook moved, and Director Workman seconded. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/simply. Our focus topic for this special session are curriculum-related field trip fees. In accordance with the pupil fee law found in Minnesota Statute, Section 123b38, before the initiation of any fee not authorized or prohibited by Sections 123b36 and 37, the school board must hold a public hearing. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing about field trip requests for students of Rochester Public Schools where student fees will be charged. The new field trip requests, which we are bringing forward to the public hearing, are described in the agenda item. The attachments in the agenda item provide information about these field trips. Lincoln K-8 Advanced Band Field Trip, Minnesota Public Schools, March 2025. Lincoln Fort Snelling and State Capitol Field Trip, May 2025. And John Marshall Band Choir Orchestra to Disney World, Orlando, Florida, December 2025. The attachment "School Board Approved Enrichment Field Trips" lists all the field trips where school board approval for a fee has already been obtained. If there are members of the public who wish to make public comments on any of the field trip requests on the agenda, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once you are recognized by the board chair, please come to the table, choose a microphone to speak into, and be seated. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name, your relationship to Rochester Public Schools, and the field trip you will be commenting on. Are there any comments on field trip fees? A second call for comments on field trip fees, and a final call for comments on field trip fees. Hearing no comments and no other business, this special meeting is adjourned at 5:34 PM. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:34 PM on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Ritzup?
Here.
Director Mawlin?
Here.
Director Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director Whitehorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Director Barlow moved, and Director Marvin seconded.
Workman.
Director?
You can have it.
Okay, Workman.
We'll fight over it.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available at RochesterSchools.org/simply. Item 3, comments to the board. It is important for the school board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and hear during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within our authority. The board and superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the school board meeting. The form is available on the RPS website and on the Simply main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the school board. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is West Lund.
For post-secondary options, school counselors work with all students to remove barriers to learning by helping students apply academic achievement strategies, manage emotions, build interpersonal skills, and support students' mental health needs. RPS counselors are leading the way in implementing both the post-secondary pathways and the mental health components of our strategic plan, and they have an important role to play in our multi-tiered systems of supports and family engagement work as well. Thank you to our Rochester Public Schools school counselors for your commitment to getting all of our students what they need to be healthy and successful. Item four point two are board member updates. Does any board member have updates from committees or anything to share Director Barlow?
Sure. On February the sixth, I participated in a skip visit site at Churchill Elementary. As a title on school, I was impressed with how they're providing high-quality education through literacy development and collaboration of students. Principal Peterson and staff provided an excellent model for what educational diversity accomplishes. I'm looking forward to attending their upcoming Family Engineering Night in conjunction with the Works Museum. It's a nonprofit organization with the mission to inspire the next generation of innovators, engineers, and creative problem solvers. This event will feature hands-on activities, including a take-home project design for families to explore and to team-build together. And then, absent my notes, I also want to commend my four or five colleagues who were also able to participate in this skip visit, and they are of such great value, and I look forward to the two point oh iteration and how we will continue to build upon this.
Director Cook, did I see?
Oh, yes. A quick update from the Legislative Committee. We are continuing to work with engaging with our local elected state representatives in both the Minnesota House and Senate, and had a very productive meeting this past week with Senator Bolden, where we talked about the priorities that this board has already approved, and she was very receptive to the information. We're going to follow up and look forward to continuing those meetings.
Director Marvin?
Sarah Louise, Henry, and I continue to meet with middle school students at their sites, and the focus is on building leadership skills. In particular, we've been working with kids about how they can identify opportunities or challenges that exist at their schools and what they can do as they work together to come up with solutions. With middle school kids, one of the important issues we're looking at is before you jump to a solution, try to look at two things. First of all, what are some of the underlying causes? And secondly, maybe there's more than one solution, and our students, and I'm so proud of them, have been finding out that when they work together, especially when they work with students who are different than they are, who think differently, who come from different places, their solutions are actually better because they start to expand the way they're thinking about the problem. They get more analytical, they get much more creative, and middle school kids are already very creative. But it's been a great experience, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with these kids as they go through our school system.
Director McLaughlin?
Clerk Marvin and I participated last week in the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee. This was the first time I was able to attend, so this was something new for me. And the topic of the night was the implementation of the REED Act on our younger students and their literacy. And what I was surprised to hear is that we also talked about the implementation of the REED Act in our early learning centers, that I didn't expect that to even be part of that discussion, and it was. So that was really exciting to hear and hear an update about how those teachers are trained and implement the REED Act with our very youngest learners. I also was very appreciative of the parents that were able to attend, and I think there are likely ways that we can engage further with our parents to determine the best ways for them to be able to have their input on this committee either in person or in other ways, whether it's how we schedule it, or how we plan it, or how we promote it, that I think there's lots of ways that more parents could be involved in that work to look at both our curriculum from a community perspective and our instruction. Listening to the public speakers tonight, that might be an opportunity for parents to get involved as well.
Director Whitman?
So as far as community engagement, we do have the upcoming Sound of Gospel music. We do have RPS students that will be participating in the choir production. It is tickets are on sale now. It's a big collaboration, so we'll have students involved. It's a really good opportunity for our community to get out, and they're really wanting the families and the children to be a part of this. The NAACP, the Mayo Clinic, it's a large partnership. There are tickets on sale at the Mayo Civic Center, but we are also spreading the word that if families would like to attend and cannot afford tickets, there are lots of community members that are available that you can reach out to if you cannot. You can reach out to myself personally and let me know, and I can get you in touch with someone who can. But I do just want to make sure that people know we are still doing some outreach out there within the community as well, and we want to do more things to partner with our RPS students, as they will be doing a mass choir. I believe all of the high schools were offered the opportunity to be a part of the mass choir, and they will be doing a presentation at the end of the celebration. So I really hope that people come out and support our children.
Is that February?
Oh, February the twenty eighth. I pulled it up, you guys, and didn't even give you any information.
Seven P M.
At seven P M. And prior to that, the twenty eighth at seven P M., and prior to that, they're doing a community fair at the Civic Center. So they're on sale at the Civic Center. Tickets are cheaper if you buy them directly at the Civic Center, everybody, instead of buying them online on Ticketmaster. Ticketmaster is charging a fee, but please spread the word. We want to fill the building. You know, we're fine with being standing room only. It's a one-night performance, and we really want to support the kids that are participating in that event.
What time is the community fair?
I believe it starts at five thirty, five thirty.
Director Workman?
So along with Director Barlow and some of my other colleagues, I was also on the Churchill visit on February sixth. What I found really interesting was it was a conference day, and so in conjunction with that conference day, they also had an art fair. There were Lego kits available, wood kits which were donated, and a book fair. I also got to observe a number of lessons that were occurring during the wit and wisdom lesson. Students were very engaged in analyzing the artwork. I was really impressed with how the teacher went about engaging the students in order to do that kind of analysis. The other thing that we were told afterwards was that it takes about three years for there to be a really strong comfort level in teaching wit and wisdom. So I think it's important to take the long view, that results take time. So the foundation and building blocks are being put into place for student success. So one example that I'll give from my own experience was many years ago, we had what was called a tri-level orchestra concert in Rochester, and it was held at the Mayo Civic Center, and it was all of the orchestra students in the city. There was the elementary beginners or the beginners, the middle school, and the high school. And it was always wonderful as a director of the high school orchestra to listen to my kids remember, "I remember when I was at the other end," and the kids at the other end were like, "Wow, this is where I could be." So results take time, but they are absolutely worth it, and I'm really impressed with the progress that's being made, the enthusiasm, and the engagement of students.
Director Whitman?
I also want to add to Churchill where we were visiting, I was very impressed with their parent involvement. I believe they had a daytime event, and they said they only had like two kids whose parent was not able to make it. So to let people know, we are paying a lot of attention to parent involvement, and I personally can say that it is very important, and we are wanting to make sure that we encourage parents and families to get involved. And Churchill did a wonderful example of that in reaching out to their parents and getting them involved, and even they were surprised at how many parents were able to accommodate a daytime program. So I think that's a great example to show that it is very possible, and we can start moving our trends back towards having more parents be involved. So I think that's great news.
Thank you, board members. Our next items are five point one through five sixteen, our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second?
It has been moved by Director Marvin and second by Director Workman. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is six point one, a focus topic, our K five literacy curriculum implementation. Superintendent McCall?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite my colleagues to come on down and join. I don't know if our chief academic officer is going to be joining. You're staying over on the side there. But as they do, let me just set up this focus topic and the next one in the same way. I think one of the mistakes that a school district, or maybe any organization, that has an aggressive agenda for change can make is that our governing board gets involved in voting for the change, but then you get disconnected from the implementation of the change. And in an effort to avoid that, you are going to get updates tonight, first on our elementary literacy curriculum, and then the creation of a new middle school alternative learning program, which you voted for previously, but now we're in the midst of implementation, and we all know that the devil is in the details. And what we're learning and finding is going to be really foundational to the success of both of those efforts. So we're starting tonight with the literacy curriculum. Board members will recall, we have focused in other sessions on different aspects of our literacy strategy. We've talked about our frequent assessment strategy. We've talked about teacher professional development. I'm sure we'll touch on those things, but we're really talking about the curriculum or what we teach tonight. And just to kick that off, before I turn it over to our colleagues to introduce themselves and begin, we've mentioned, and it's already come up tonight, that Minnesota passed something called the REED Act, which was a sweeping effort to strengthen the reading skills of our young students in Minnesota. The Minnesota REED Act did not include the adoption of a new curriculum. We decided to do that in Rochester because doing all the other things that are required by the REED Act without strengthening what we teach would have been a far less comprehensive approach. But that means that our teachers and our leaders in Rochester have had an even heavier lift than the very heavy lift that is on the plates of elementary educators all over the state. So not only thank you to all of you for leading that work, and we're going to hear about it now, but to the classroom teachers and principals and education support professionals and literacy coaches all over Rochester who are literally reinventing the airplane while they're flying it. They are teaching kids and learning a curriculum that, as Director Workman just mentioned she saw on your visit to Churchill, is a quantum leap in the cognitive challenge we're asking our young kids to experience and master in reading. So thank you, and we'll turn it over to you for an update on this curriculum called Wit and Wisdom.
Thank you very much, Dr. McCall, and Chair Nathan, and directors. We're excited to be here tonight. I think it was about a year ago that we were here talking about which curriculum we were hoping to adopt. So it's exciting to reach this point, and I know there's been tons of work being done by everybody in our buildings, especially the teachers, to lift this off. I'm excited to have Lindsay Reiches with us here tonight. She is a fourth grade teacher at Bishop, and so she'll be sharing some reflections from the classroom as well. And then, of course, our chief, Mona Perkins, is here with us today. I'm waiting for the slides to move to the next one, so I can...
You've got...
You have the power.
Yeah, I have the power then, okay.
You do.
Yeah, so you can see here the bullet points of where we're going to go tonight. We're going to give a brief overview of structured literacy, which is really listed in our RPS literacy plan that I'm sure you've seen. We're going to talk about our K five literacy curriculum to show all the components are covered, and then we're really going to deep dive into that wit and wisdom curriculum and have classroom reflections, talk about the challenges and the progress, of course, rolling out anything. There are going to be some hurdles that we've been taking on, and then really what we've learned through this implementation that we could really use in the future and possibly replicate. So that's what we'll be talking about this evening. So this right here is a brief overview that you'll also find in our literacy plan, but I'd just like to do that before we get into the curriculum so that we know. You see the five pillars of literacy there, which basically are all the components of literacy that we need to make sure that our students are exposed to and engaged in. We know that it starts with that phonemic awareness, which is really about sounds, that kids are learning sounds, manipulating sounds, beginning and end sounds, and those middle sounds. And then, of course, with the phonics piece, we're mapping that to letters, and that's when they're really learning to decode, which is a big part of especially our foundational years, those K one and K one through two years. Fluency is a big part of it, becoming fluent readers and having reading at a pace that helps kids to understand it as well. And then, of course, the vocabulary part is really about the knowledge building, and then our ultimate goal is comprehension. And so there's so much research out there, especially as you can see, it's listed, the National Reading Panel in 2000 that talked about how we really need structured literacy. And over the years, there have been different... And over the years, there have been different approaches to, to reading. And we know that structured literacy is that explicit teaching and that we have a sequence of skills that we're following in a systematic way so that our children all have that opportunity to read. So the other thing I wanted to bring to light is the rope that our teachers have been engaged in deep, deep learning on over the last like three years, which really shows all the different strands that, that help us to develop skilled readers. And so you can see once again, kind of like what we just saw, the word recognition piece is there in the blue. That's really that decoding piece. And then we get to language comprehension that has so many more strands as well, which, as you're going to find, there's a whole lot in wit and wisdom that is addressing those, those top strands in the red there. But I just wanted to ground us in, in that research because all that we're doing is aligned with, with the rope. And then briefly, just to share with you the curriculum that we do have in our elementary schools for literacy. So in K one, we have Hegarty, which is about phonemic awareness, those sounds that we talked about. And we've got our K two, really great reading, which is the functional or the foundational piece as well, the phonics. We also have Geodes, which kind of gives us the decoding part, and it goes deep into knowledge building. It's a really nice companion with wit and wisdom. And then third through fifth grade also has functional phonics and morphology that they've rolled out. And that, we're in year one of that as well. So our teachers are, they're doing just a little bit of new implementing this year. And we've heard a lot of positives about that from teachers. It's a little bit different kind of implementation than our wit and wisdom. And then you can see K through five is wit and wisdom. And the focus is knowledge building. And so it's about all different types of content. We've got science, we've got social studies, they're even digging into art within that curriculum. So you can see the visual that just kind of shows you all of the components of literacy. Because at times I find myself even saying reading, but it's a lot more than just reading. It's oral language development and writing as well. And so all of those pieces are weaved into wit and wisdom. And what we know about wit and wisdom is that there are definitely shifts from what our current practices have been. And so off to the right here, I'm just sharing with you some of those shifts for our teachers as well, that it's a knowledge-focused curriculum. It's very much inquiry-based in, in that every module is based on questions, an essential question. And then every, it breaks into three different parts that they have different focusing questions to dig a little deeper in various ways. It's complex, authentic grade-level text. And I know you'll hear more from Lindsay about that and the challenges within having that, that challenging text for every child. It integrates the styles and the conventions. They go into some deep language dives in their lessons. Huge speaking and listening routines. I'm sure that when you're visiting classrooms, you probably hear a lot of students speaking going on, which is exciting to hear. And then the writing is across all genres and based on what they're learning in the reading. And that part has been amazing. If you walk around and see it around the schools, our teachers are like, they are writing more than they have been for the past year. So we're so excited to see that.
Can I just add something about, when you, when you dive deep into the, the knowledge building piece, kids are able to, to read higher level text because they have more background knowledge. And so the, the text complexity, they are able to go into more complex text because they're developing just more background knowledge. So some of the text is grade level, and some of the text is actually slightly above grade level as well. So you get, they get a mix of both.
Yeah, and one of the big shifts that we've heard from teachers is that in order for them to go into those high levels, levels of reading and deep understanding, they're reading the text more than once, which is something that sometimes they'd read them a couple of times maybe in previous curriculum. But this time, there's like a different purpose, and then they're doing that close reading in different ways. And that is developing a deeper understanding of the content too. So that's a shift because they're reading and rereading and rereading oftentimes. So we just wanted to share with you some of the glimpses of our classrooms. And I'm so excited to hear that you're, you're out and about and you're, you, you used some E words today that I'm so excited about because you talked about how kids are engaged and there's enthusiasm. And I think you'll hear that from Lindsay over here too. And it's also challenging work. And so I want to make sure that we, we acknowledge that. Our teachers are working lots of hours to lift this off. And many of them are, are seeing it is worth it, and it's going to take some time to feel comfortable with it, right? But so exciting. So just a few glimpses, this is a kindergarten classroom. And they're engaged in learning, for this one, they're in the farm animals module that they're working on. And so I believe this is a setting activity. And you can see how they have the text right there, and they're looking through and they're, they're drawing their pictures about what that looks like at the different seasons. Another one here, these are examples of the essential questions that are there. And so you can see one of them, to the left, you'll see a kindergarten classroom. And that was just the beginning of what makes a good story, and they're digging into farm animals. And then there's a first grade picture there as well. And I think that day they were doing a reader's theater with a Dr. Seuss book, so it was kind of fun to see. One of our instructional coaches, this is a quote that she shared, and I thought it was really powerful. She said, "We have noticed vast increases in students being able to express their ideas due to the repeated close readings of texts." Students are able to speak to their own ideas, many connections are made, and students have a lot to contribute when they are so familiar with the material. We heard first, first graders talking about Azerbaijan, Finland, Canada, and more in their first module. So she was like, oh my gosh, this is exciting to hear. These are just examples of some of the anchor charts that you would see in the classrooms. Really deep in text evidence is, is a lot of the work. And so the one that you see that there's lots of pictures, that's what it looks like in kindergarten, right? They have their own post-its, and they're sharing what they're seeing, and they draw it. And as the years go, they then are using more, more letters with that and writing some words. And then I can't remember what grade level we're seeing, but in another grade level, they have their notice and wonder chart. That's something that, that's a part of every lift off for the modules too, and many lessons, that they're noticing and wondering about art and the reading. And these are some really, really great displays and wonderful writing. I believe this was at Falwell for a third grade module, which is about the sea. And one of my other favorite quotes from the year is a teacher who had said, "Wit and wisdom has raised the bar for our students, and they are jumping over it." So that's something that I just think, I know that it's hard work, but we have those, those times that teachers are saying, we're seeing it, we're seeing it. And I know when Mona has worked with us before, she says, "They will rise," right? And we do see students are, are reaching those goals. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the teacher who really knows what it looks like. And Lindsay will just take you a little bit through her module and reflections.
Hi, nice to be here. Thank you for having me. As Heather said, my name's Lindsay. I teach at Bishop, and this is our first year of doing wit and wisdom, so we're all learning it together. That's actually the focus while from my classroom. So Heather touched on this, that there is an essential question, focusing questions, content framing questions, craft questions, learning goals, all sorts of stuff that we have to draw the kids' attention to for each lesson. Some of them span between lessons, so our focusing question might last for like three or four lessons, for example. We just dig deeper into that. Our first module was the focusing, or the essential question was, what does it mean to have a great heart literally and figuratively? And we read two texts with that. One of them was the circulatory story, and one was Love That Dog. The circulatory was all about the heart and how the heart works. And Love That Dog is a book of poems, but it also tells a narrative story about a boy who has lost a pet. This is actually, these are pictures taken from our school. Those are our fourth graders. At the end of our, our first story, the circulatory story, we had a, kind of like a heart surgery day. And the kids got to dive into the heart in a lot of different ways. We had donations from Olmsted Medical Center. They brought us P P Es, so the kids got face shields and masks and gloves and gowns and all of the fun things. They built clay hearts out of, well, they built hearts out of clay, and then we ended up painting them. And they modeled all the, the different parts of the heart that they learned how to pronounce and read and what they did throughout that. Other schools got to have cardiologists come in, paramedics, cardiac surgeons. So there's a lot of really deep learning about the heart in fourth grade. They also did a lot of really close reading with the text that is poster from one of our classrooms, I believe. I think it was at from Bishop, that picture, that they were learning about the different parts of the circulatory story. And then another project we did on our heart surgery day was making cards for, for patients that are in the pediatric cardiac. Heather touched on this a little bit, that wit and wisdom really focuses a lot on noticing and wondering. And our kids are asked to create, co-create sometimes, do it on their own, sometimes in their journals. Sometimes we do it as a whole class, but they do notice and wonder charts every day. And that helps them really refine their thinking. What do you notice is what does it explicitly say that it says, or I, I noticed that that sign is blue. And wondering is what does it make me think about? What questions do I have? What, you know, why, why do I think they made that sign blue? So there's a difference between them. And we decided that for this presentation, it would be helpful to just break apart our thought process into noticing and wondering. Some of the things that we've noticed about wit and wisdom are that the texts are complex. There are a wide range of readers in our classroom, some very emerging readers who are nowhere near a fourth grade text level like capacity. And then there are some readers that could probably do fine in some high school reading levels. So the complex texts are difficult in some areas for some of those lower, lower or emerging readers. And some of the other readers are, maybe it's a little bit easier, but they're, because of the content and the subject area, they're still all very much getting into it because the conversations learn themselves. Even our lowest readers are able to listen to the conversations and then participate in the learning of the content. They're exposed to it still. So we've noticed that it is difficult with the text, but we're rising. The noticing for scheduling is wit and wisdom is meant to be a ninety-minute lesson. And in elementary, that is not a thing that we have. So we have noticed that scheduling is, is challenging. It does not fit. But we are trying to work around that. So that's a notice. We noticed that the scheduling isn't, is something that we need to work on. But some of the things we noticed that we liked the best are connections and enthusiasm, conversation quality, and increase in writing. Those are all fantastic. The kids are connecting with the text. They are excited about it. They come in and they say, you know, my great uncle was a heart surgeon, and he just blah, blah, blah. And they, they always want to talk about all of the, the connections that they've made, which is really exciting. The conversation quality from module zero, which is our training module, up until now, it's like night and day. Not module zero, they just stared at us with blank faces. And now at the, we're starting module two, they're just like all over it. So it's really exciting. And then their writing, the, the pieces that they're writing are just completely different than what we've seen before because they write all the time now. So we've got a long ways to go, but there's been a lot of improvement. Some of the wonderings that we've had are scaffolding and supporting. We do have some of those resources available that was purchased with the curriculum. We just haven't had the time to dig in. So there's our M L components, for example, that we think might be very helpful for us once we have the time to really see how that helps, and that could help with that complex text as well. So our wondering was, will that help us? Then numbers two and three prioritizing lesson components and year two refinements and guidelines. We're just kind of wondering if the district is planning to help us with pacing and guiding, knowing that our scheduling doesn't really work for elementary. Yesterday, we had the greatest, greatest discussion as a team, trying to fit all these things together and do some planning and do some learning. And we realized all the other teams in the district are doing the same thing. We're trying to pare down this curriculum to fit. We wonder if maybe this is something that a bigger group could come together. And this is how we've pared it down for everybody versus everyone doing all the same work in all the different sites. So that's a wonder we had. And then growth over time, we just wonder, is this going to really start to show these kids are learning and they're doing, they're doing great?
So I think Lindsay basically shared what, what the challenges have been and the, and the things that we've been celebrating. Overall, the time to prepare and to internalize the curriculum, our teachers are saying, oh, it's taking a lot of time. So that's definitely been a challenge that we've tried to creatively build in some additional time. I know principals have, have been creative about like having extended P L C time and different ways they're covering their classrooms to provide time. But really, there's just never enough time with a new curriculum. So we've tried to build that in. Yesterday, we had a professional learning day, and the focus the whole morning for our wit and wisdom teachers was planning and collaboration. So we offered time for them to pop onto Google meets or meet with us, kindergarten met with us in person if they chose to. The rest of the time was to collaborate and build in with their teams. Implementing the shifts, knowing those shifts I already mentioned, has been a challenge, just learning about, oh, we do the close reading so many times. I'm supporting students, as Lindsay, Lindsay talked about, at the various levels of, of reading with the complex text. Scheduling and pacing. So the lessons are ninety-minute lessons. And so our teachers, in their pacing guidance, teach three lessons a week. But as you can imagine, that means they need to figure out, oh, the stop points, the start points. And that's something that we as a district do need to build in. And we're continuing to learn how we can make that just a little bit easier to navigate for teachers. So that's definitely on our list. Progress, we've already heard about. We're seeing and hearing kids with their thinking, their speaking, their writing. The pacing is improving for teachers. Students are building and sharing that knowledge, and teachers are collaborating with one another. We're trying to stretch into district-wide collaboration, but we're just in the initial stages here. What we've learned about the implementation, we started with really de-implementation, like talking about what are those past practices and the past resources that didn't necessarily support structured literacy? And so that was a part of the process that we think we would replicate to make it very clear what we're going to be doing now and what we're going to end doing. The training that has happened, and you can see there's a couple there, has been imperative. Really prioritizing staff development and funding time for teachers to be engaged in the training. They had training on structured literacy, but they also had wit and wisdom training. And I believe they all engaged in, gosh, three trainings this year. Our principals have also been engaged in learning as we've done guided observations with them. So three times this year, we have full-day trainings, and we're going into classrooms, and we're learning the curriculum. Teachers have been so welcoming and, and kind to let us come in as they're learning. And then we're studying the different design of the curriculum too, and how we can then provide coaching for teachers as well. And then, of course, instructional coaching, our really strong district literacy team that continues to lead our grade-level curriculum teams in getting feedback from teachers and developing resources to support. And then just creating that time for planning and collaboration is, is huge. So those are kind of things we would want to replicate and continue to think about in the future. And then, of course, we have to end with this adorable picture with enthusiasm once again. But I just wanted to shout out tonight, our teachers, they're amazing. Sometimes they make, it makes me almost cry, their commitment to all that they do every day, to every child, and to lift off a complex curriculum. And they do it with such expertise and creativity like Lindsay's sitting right here. It's just inspiring what they're doing this year. So we thank all of their work and your support of their work as well.
Board members, any questions, comments? Director Cook?
Well, thank you so much for this update. I, I'm going to strive to, to keep my comments brief. I, I won't succeed. But this, this topic for me just continues to be of critical importance, both from my head and my heart. Because I, I think we know the, we, we've all heard numerous times that reading proficiency by grade three is a critical milestone to the long-term lifetime success, really, or achievement of any student. We know that reading proficiency scores continue to be important drivers of enrollment, among other things. But for me, my heart is with this work so much because every single literacy skill that is imparted to a student is like unwrapping a layer to reveal a confident student who is not burdened by the, the shame and the negative feelings about themselves that come from struggles in early literacy. This work is so important to our district and to our students, to our most vulnerable students. So every time I hear an update on this, and, and just briefly on wit and wisdom, I'm excited that we are finding a way to do this because leveraging the curiosity of our students, the way that this notice and wonder prompt does, is so powerful. But I'm really, really glad that we have divided that knowledge-building part of our literacy practices from the, the phonics. Because I think, you know, that, that impulse in the past might have been why some literacy practices drifted astray. And so I'm glad that we are very intentionally providing structured literacy intentionally and explicitly in a sequenced way imparting those skills. Okay, now to my question. And it will, it, it might be somewhat familiar, but I, I really continue to be concerned, or at least aware, that there are myriad things for a school district, a leadership team, a board, to focus its attention on. And while we have approved this new curriculum and we have supported the professional development of teachers and so forth, I do think. I do think that we need to be reminded from time to time of what are the important things either that we are doing now or that we could be doing. You touched on a few of them, um, the, the need for 90-minute times and so forth. But what, what do you see right now as the roadblocks to successfully implementing robust structured literacy that allows our students to achieve reading proficiency at their highest possible potential? What are, what are the things on your radar right now that this board should be aware of?
I can speak to it a little bit. And then Lindsay, you definitely shared. I, I think when we talked about scheduling, that is something that we, we need to work out the pacing to support our teachers. And I know that also the scheduling, the instructional minutes in an elementary day has been a part of our conversations because I know that, um, the new times, which I'm hearing such positives about, I think when we shifted, we lost some instructional minutes there. And so that's something that I think that we've, we've been trying to figure out the timing of everything, right? When we're trying to do all that structured literacy requires, just trying to figure out the schedule so that it fits, um, for teachers, right? Do you have anything to add about that?
You go ahead and then I'll, then I'll jump in.
I was going to jump in and say the same thing. Just scheduling is the hardest part for us. We love the new schedule. Like the kids are awake in the morning and they were asleep by four o'clock. So the, the new schedule is great, but what we're really struggling with is elementary just kind of has like a wide open day and it doesn't have the periods of the day. And so there's special areas, for example, like our art and our music and our PE and our media classes. Because there's shared positions around the whole district for some of them. They're going to point to here, point for there. We are, we're locked in to a lot of different things scheduling-wise that we just can't have our literacy block at this time because this is the only time we have our media teacher here. And it's, it makes our scheduling a lot more challenging than if you were to go to a secondary school and have 45 or whatever the minutes are right now. Minute, um, times where this is the time that my kids are going to get 45 minutes of uninterrupted math, for example. And in elementary, it's not like that they're pulled for everything all the time. There isn't a time where they go get their, um, reading resource, you know? And in their schedule, it's, they're just pulled all the time because the schedule's so kind of wide open.
And we want to make sure that all the students have the core curriculum. And so they're prioritizing that. And then, okay, then when do they get the other things that they need during the day too?
At my, at my school, we're kind of locked into 30 minutes of protected time each day. When we're trying to fit 90 in. And then we have 30 minutes of, um, functional phonics and morphology on top of that. So the scheduling, I think, is the biggest thing. People, people are excited to help the kids learn and, and read and everything, but fitting it in is hard.
And I think the good news.
Let's hear it, Mona.
Because we're in charge of that. So we get to fix it. We're aware and we have a plan. So it is on our radar. As a, as a previous elementary principal, I think I walked in dreaming about the schedule. Like I needed my hands on a schedule from the minute I walked in. So it, like, that is absolutely on our radar and we're, I've been working on a proposal to hand to Kent to work through some of those, some of those struggles. Yes, a, an elementary day is not blocked out for you, which, which can be a gift and a curse, right? But that does, most of the time it can, it's a gift. So we, I think it's something that can be worked out. I also think one thing we have to be careful of when we talk about the pacing is we can't necessarily consider this year pacing as, as the standard because we're, we're slow this year because it's our first year. So on top of everything that Heather has done in rolling this out and the supporting of rolling this out, she's actually gone out to a classroom and taught a le, she was, she taught a lesson this week and came back and was like, I was like, how'd it go? And she's like, man, I was really slow. And if I was to do this again, this is what I would do. That's actually, that's exactly what's happening with the teachers. And so next year, when they roll it out, it's going to go faster. It's the same thing when kids read. That's why we practice fluency because you start off slow and you get faster at it. So I just want to be careful of, we don't necessarily want to meet together and say, we're going to block out our pacing for next year based on what happened this year. We just need, we need to be cautious of that because then we could set ourselves up to move really slow next year when we're ready to go faster. So the timing of that, we just have to give ourselves grace this year. But some of the other obstacles you're facing, they're so real and we're hoping to get those, like for sure fixed. I think the shortening of the day by 15 minutes is another thing we just have to talk about to see like if there's a way around that. Because that did happen. That is a, that's a legit struggle.
Yeah. And our curriculum team, like the pacing guide, even though this year is slower as we've learned the curriculum, we have a lot of guidance that we can use as we roll out materials for next year to say, oh, we could do this part a little bit more and you could take this part out. That's what teachers are wondering, but as we're learning it, it's hard to know, right? We just have to experience it first, so.
Right. And a 90-minute lesson this year is probably actually taking more like 110 minutes. Like just because we're just, we're moving even, it just takes longer. You're learning. So really good questions. I love how much you love that.
Well, thank you and thank you for your work.
Go back and forth. Director Whitehorn?
Okay. So I guess I, I'm excited about it. It sounds like an amazing program. I, I mirror what Director Cook says. I think literacy is a, is, is very powerful. One of the best things we can give our students. It's the cornerstone to every kind of learning, right? From mathematics to science, whatever. You can read, you can do a lot of things. I guess my question is, and maybe this has been answered, uh, previous to my time, is how is this going to transition into the middle schools, right? Because I feel like this is a great, robust program and kids are excited. So I guess, and I'm not putting a damper on it, but I don't want, you know, we don't want our kids all excited about reading and learning and they get this great program and then they go into middle school and go, yeah, I hate it here. So I, I just wonder how are we transitioning? And I know it's a brand-new program, but we do, we, we should have fifth graders, right? That are doing the program. So since it's a brand-new program, we have, you know, our older kids have done our previous programming. They're doing this brand-new, exciting programming. And then from what I can detect, they're going back into the old stuff, uh, come sixth grade. So is there some kind of plan to, um, either continue with the wit and wisdom into the middle school years or some kind of transitioning plan? Because we don't want children to get this robust, exciting learning in elementary school and then have it die off, um, in middle school. Because they, they still got a lot of years to go. But we got to keep them excited for at least another, at least the seventh grade. We want them.
Well, we want them excited all, all the way through. And we will continue to, we'll continue to work on building it. We have a lot of work to do all the way, all the way through.
So we do have a plan to, um, I, I'm just, I guess my concern is about the kids right now, right? So the kids in fifth grade right now, um, who are doing the wit and wisdom, who are going to be going over the sixth, to sixth grade next year. I know that this is something that will take time to roll out. But do we have a little bit of a, what word am I looking for? A little bridge, a little, a little something so that they're not, you know, until we can implement the next program, we just don't lose those kids? Am I, am I wording this in a way that's making sense to somebody?
No, it's, it's a, it's a really powerful question. I have, uh, shared with a number of colleagues that, um, shocking to me now, it's almost 20 years ago. I lived part of this journey as an administrator in St. Paul Public Schools. And I remember vividly when middle school teachers started to say, oh my goodness, the kids are showing up so far ahead in reading of what we are used to. It was a shock that the kids coming out of a structured elementary program were ready for middle school work. Your point, Director Whitehorn, is a critical one. We need to be ready for that. We have laid the groundwork with the structures because the work on multi-tiered systems of support, to have the interventions, to have the assessments, that is very much underway at middle school. That is very robust. A next phase is the curricular piece. It's building on, it's the what you teach. And it gets trickier, as in some ways Lindsay was just mentioning, with the difference in secondary school structures. There isn't a reading block in middle or high school in the same way that there is at elementary. But we know we need to create that. We need to fill it with rich curriculum. And I think that one of the things that I, uh, love came out of the presentation we just heard is that this is a knowledge-rich curriculum, which might sound like a no-brainer. Well, of course, curriculum should have a lot of knowledge in it. In fact, we have had a couple decades where we underemphasized kids learning knowledge in favor of procedure. So we do need to be thinking. One of many very good things about the 2024 Ignite Student Learning Referendum is that we have a $1.2 million base for ongoing curriculum enhancement in RPS now. That is not sufficient for every grade level and every subject area, but it's 1.2 million more than we had before. So we do have some resources. We need to be, uh, creative in not only building up in literacy, but we also have, uh, science ahead of us for sure in elementary. And then we know there's work to do in mathematics. So the good news is we have some resources that we lacked previously and we have some structures. But your point is very well taken about what, what's the curriculum going to be in middle school. And so let's, let's make a, a point of putting an update for you on a future board agenda as we get, uh, deeper into that work. Because it's going to be exciting as our middle school colleagues start to see what's happening with what these kids are going to be ready for. And we need to make sure that they are equipped with, uh, content that's going to keep these kids engaged.
And thank you. Thanks for the work that you guys are doing. And I know we have, we'll take time.
Director Barlow?
Going in order.
Uh, I initially had questions regarding the instructional block time, but you guys already addressed that. I am curious though, in terms of, how many modules are there?
There are three modules that the teachers have.
And then presently, how much time is spent on the modules, um, and the knowledge components? Or are you, are you separating them out or are they?
How, when we rolled it out, uh, they were to be putting 60 minutes into their day for the knowledge-building curriculum. And so as Lindsay had talked about, they're 90-minute lessons. So the teachers have three lessons to teach in a week. So then they determine which one is going to float into the next day and such. So that's kind of how it's built.
Then the final question deals with the K2 GEOs. The decodability, how are you making parents aware? How are they becoming involved and what home supports are being made available?
Thanks for that question. We, we are deep in the work of actually, um, when we had our CCIAC meeting just last week, one of the things that we gathered input from our community members is, um, the website. We shared a link that is not yet live that, um, helps parents to, to know, what can I practice with if my child is needing work on this? There's also links to, um, ebooks that are translatable that we've added to that, but it's not live yet. We're still working on that. But there are several resources that we've put together. They actually are linked a little bit to, um, our parent notification letters that are something through the Read Act that we're supposed to be sending home. Family notifications to help, um, notify families if we're seeing some challenges in, in reading development. And then it shares with them, hey, you can do this with your child based on the data that we're getting from some of the screening that we're doing. So, yeah, I, I think that, um, we still have some work to do, so we have some feedback on that. But, um, we hope that it will be live in a month or two for families.
Do the GEOs text go home? I don't think they totally go home.
Uh, GEOs, GEOs texts do not go home. Sorry, because that's another part of it. They're, they're in the classroom and they actually, we have had those for about three years now. And so a lot of teachers use them in small group. But they were used in, in full group as well. And so there's different texts that go with the different books in wit and wisdom. So that was kind of exciting when wit and wisdom was adopted because now they have the overarching module-like themes and questions and all of these smaller GEOs that, um, can be used for kids, whether they're decoding or they're building more knowledge on the same content.
Yeah, they're for the younger grades. They're just a decodable text. But they're, they're such great books because they do support the knowledge building and they're, like, the kids are able to read them. Yeah, they're, they're great.
Yeah, and thank you for answering the, um, home support, uh, side of that because, um, it's a different ballgame today. And parents, I think, are, uh, at times challenged to keep abreast as to what the kids are being taught and what they can do to support what our schools are currently addressing. So thank you for sharing that.
Director Barlow?
Please, Director Barlow.
Going in order.
No, I didn't have a question.
Oh, you didn't? Director Workman?
Director Workman then.
Director Workman?
This is really going to be a little tricky for me to articulate because I really don't want to go back to fourth grade. But if I did, I would want to have you and this process in place. I remember when I was in fourth grade, and this is really going to, uh, you know, reveal my age, but y'all know it anyway, is, it was Dick, Jane and Sally. It was rote memorization. It was not exciting. It was not engaging. And the only reason I learned to be a voracious reader and to remain curious about the world was in spite of fourth grade and some of the other grades. Because my parents, granted, yep, this is privilege. We went to the library. We, we did all those kinds of things. But now that I'm seeing it happening in school, you know, I'm just thinking of, um, you know, kids who are trying to make career choices when they're in high school or thinking ahead. It's like, I remember when I was in fourth grade, do you remember that lesson on the circulatory system and how great that was? You know, I, I just see this all connecting so, so well. And for anybody who wants to go back to when I was in fourth grade, that is just, I will say it, that is just dead wrong. And it would be doing an incredible disservice to our students to go back to that. As you commented and many others have, the world is a more complex, diverse, uh, place than it was when I was growing up. My kids grew up in a more diverse, more diversity here in Rochester in a lot of different ways. And it served them really well. And kids now have even more of those advantages. So I want to commend you, your team, the teachers who are working so hard to learn this curriculum and present it. The engagement that I see with these kids on these slides is amazing. It will continue to spark their curiosity and they will continue to want to learn. And when they do that, they will be developing their critical thinking skills. So I don't really have a question in there, but just a moment of reflection and, um, how excited I am to see this work happening this way. And I can't wait until our, our next skip visit in, in March. It's, it's just been fabulous. So, thank you.
So I, oh, did you have some? Go ahead.
I do.
I didn't want to stuff them.
Yeah, no.
I have a question. I was pointing at Mr. Barlow had his hand up. I was trying to just be a good team player.
I have two quick things. When you talk about the structural issues, are those universal to all the schools in a similar way? Or are there certain schools that that's more challenging? Whether it's the size of the school or, you know, they're nearby the other school that they share with or those kinds of things?
It can be both, right? Like, part of it is, is system-wide, but some of the system-wide issues don't necessarily occur at certain buildings because if I, if you have enough sections and you have a full-time PE teacher and a full-time music teacher, it doesn't affect you, right? So it's, it could be, it could be either.
Part of the picture. And is it universal across grades?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the related question I have is, um, Lindsay, could you talk it all? You even talked about assessment. So in a big picture, could you tell us how that fits into this work?
We haven't had, um, obviously an MCA assessment yet since we've started this.
I was saying more fast bridge.
Yeah. We just took our winter fast bridge. And so we're, we're still kind of in the preliminary digging into how that's going. Kids are still learning the curriculum too. We're hoping that it's going to show great improvement. The kids are talking a, a lot more about things that are more in-depth. I'm seeing growth in my classroom. We've only had the one assessment since we started this. So it's really hard to say whether anything is related to wit and wisdom, to be honest. I, I'm not sure. But we're seeing kids really excited, like, uh, Director Workman, like what I was hearing you say, the reason that 90 minutes is hard is the kids get so excited. Like, we have to cut them off and we don't want to. And we are, like, we're already trying to condense it and they don't want to stop talking. So they're into it. They're really excited. Like, at least our heart surgery day thing, that's not in the curriculum. That's just something we found on a social media shared group and wanted to implement it. But the kids still talk about it. They still talk. They still talk about, I want to be a heart surgeon one day. So, I think we're making a difference, and it's going to start to show in the assessments and the, you know, boring part of school where we have to take the tests. I think that's going to start to show, but it's really early to know exactly, especially because the teachers are still getting used to teaching this content.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think if we ask teachers right now, they would look at the writing to be like, okay, we're assessing that they are growing knowledge, because we're seeing it in their writing and in what they're sharing and speaking. But it doesn't necessarily always, it's not going to be necessarily reflected in MCA, the first year of implementing it. But, yeah, there are various ways they're being assessed. I don't know that FastBridge would pick that out necessarily either with the, at least not yet, when we're just getting to know it.
And one thing I've noticed in our skip visits, and maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention, but I feel like you're letting the kids in on the literacy secrets. So, I see, I don't just see word walls. I see the terminology of the curriculum. Like, the terms about linguistics and the different, not just what the different sounds are, but how they're labeled, what category they fall in. And, you know, even, you know, these examples you've given here and what we've seen on the walls, where you're labeling it, what I think is what the curriculum calls it, right, what the technique is, but you're letting the kids know, this is what you're learning. You're telling them the category or the piece of the learning process that they're learning about, not just saying, oh, this is what we're going to learn today. And I don't know if that's a different approach. It just seems so much more explicit and defined in all the classrooms that we've been seeing.
Yeah, it definitely is. You probably saw sound walls if you were in our primary classrooms, so they're even telling them what sounds families they're in, which is very different than past practice, right? So, that's a part of it. And then, if you're in our third through fifth grade classrooms, you're seeing the morphology of theirs, you see prefixes and suffixes. When I did sub the other day, it was amazing. We were reading Witten Wisdom, and the kids, we had a word that started with this. And the kids were like, yep, it's up there. It means opposite of. And that was from their functional phonics curriculum, too. So, I was in there going, yes! But, yeah, it is. It's just so much more explicit.
Well, it connects the dots. Like, there's no reason to keep it a secret. When you explain to kids the rules, like, then the word give isn't, it's no longer, you don't have to say that it's an exception in English. English words don't end in V, right? So, it still gives you, it can still be the short vowel sound. It just doesn't end in V. That's why there's an E at the end, right? So, like, if you tell them the rules, they can read. There's no secret.
Kids like know Y.
They're telling them Y all the time, though.
Right, yeah. There's no secrets. We're just going to unlock those secrets so that you can have them.
Director Whitehorn.
I was ready, but I'm.
I know.
I do have a question that's more specific to the staffing side, because what we did learn was that it takes about three to five years for your teachers to really get into this. So, my question is more along the line of how our district goes, as we bring in new talent. Do we have a plan? I know that this is new, but are we already thinking ahead on how we're not going to have to restart this curve every time? Because that is a concern, too, right? We get, let's say we get three new kindergarten teachers in, they haven't taught this. Now, we're back, you know, to, you know, these longer lessons. Are we thinking ahead of how we'll be able to, I don't know, maybe fast-track new staff in? Because, you know, we want to, once we get our pace going, we want to keep with that, right? And it sounds like this program may not be as friendly to that. So, have we thought long-term about, as we hire new educators in, how do we not continue to lose the momentum every time we hire a new teacher?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. So, as we do our new teacher or new to RPS orientations, this will have to be a big part of what our new teachers are learning. So, anybody that's teaching Witten Wisdom, that will be a part of what we roll out with them. Our literacy team, we have three members of our literacy team. Then they will go out onsite as well in support in the implementation. And then we also have our instructional coaches that provide that embedded training. But definitely, it is on our scope and sequence to build that in right away. And if they haven't had years of structured literacy training, which we hope that our colleges are doing that as well, but we then, we have the resources to build them up for that. But we definitely need to prioritize that in our planning for staff development for our new staff.
Long-term, you hope that when it's not new to everyone, that the additional supports they get, because they'll be on a team, will help. There's still a learning curve. I mean, you can't take that away from somebody, but you just hope that the team will continue to support, plus we'll have a plan. We've spent today and then tomorrow, our team is meeting to really lay out a proposal for how we would like to have, like, to have a solid curriculum implementation plan that involves everything moving forward, like what we've learned from this process, what our PD plan would be for everything, just so that we have a solid plan moving forward for any curriculum that we want to implement, whether we're purchasing something or creating it on our own, so that nothing falls through the cracks. And what is our onboarding plan for new staff that comes on? What is our continuing professional development plan? Because we can't drop this. We can't let it go. We have to continue to support teachers. And it's not just Witten Wisdom, right? Because the next year, it's something else. And so, we have to have, like, a broad plan. And we're working on that. We're making sure that we've got a system-wide, like, big picture, big picture in details of the whole thing.
It sounds like it'll need to be a very fluid, fluid system, so.
Yeah.
Superintendent.
I just, to the discussion about kids being more aware of the content, maybe it's a good place to kind of leave this discussion for now, but I periodically do these videos with kids, and I just did one with kindergartners. And I did one where I asked them, what is kindergarten like? And what do you do in kindergarten? And so, they talked about, we play, we do crafts, whatever. There's one little girl, and it has to make the video. We haven't put the edit together. But I literally say, and what do you do in kindergarten? There were two little boys, and it was like, we play whatever. And this little girl said, phonics knowledge, a lot of phonics knowledge. I'm not exaggerating at all, a kindergartner said that.
There you go.
And she used that term. I was like, you're in. So, the little teasers, I asked them also, what do you think first grade is going to be like? And they said, oh, hard. You don't play in first grade. So, that's coming, but thank you again, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, let's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Move right into our next agenda item, which is our middle school ALC update.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Let me ask Travis and the team from our middle school ALC, come on up. As I mentioned at the outset, this is a meeting where we are digging into two initiatives that you have already voted to approve with some older kids in this case. We were talking just a moment ago with Director Whitehorn's question about middle school. And so, this is a progress report. The last overview you received on this effort really focused on the transition from a small program that we called Middle School Right Fit to being an alternative learning center. And we are now months into that effort. It's still a work in progress. And we wanted to give the board and the community a chance to get an update on that work, which is very, very complex but critical work. So, thank you very much, and we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Did you guys get the documents that were?
They're all on our website, and you'll be able to click the PowerPoint if we can. Is it just right in the same flow? Then, click through. There you go.
There we go. Well, Chair Nathan, members of the board, Superintendent McCall, Cabinet, thanks for having us today. Before we begin, I need to acknowledge a few people at the district level. Jackie and Mona, Heather Willman, Nicole Miller, and Connie Grimsrud, who have been so, so supportive of helping us transition into an ALC and helping with the programming that we're putting into place. So, last year, a lot of you got an introduction to what we planned with the middle school ALC. And I want you to know it's been successful thus far. It's been a great year. Just a reminder on where we came from, and Director Whitehorn, some of this might be new to you, but five years ago, we started at the Boys and Girls Club in two small classrooms as the Right Fit program. We are now an official middle school ALC, and we are housed at the Fry Dell Building, so please come and see us. There are amazing things happening there. The mission of our school has not changed. We want to provide a learning environment focused on the needs of the whole child. We believe that every student has a unique story to tell. The story has shaped their current reality, and the details of their story has a profound impact on their education. The middle school ALC will be a place where all stories are heard, welcomed, and respected. And as you know, with middle schoolers, every single day can be different. You never know what's coming through those doors, and I think it's magnified when you take a look at our program. We never know what the day is going to hold. But what we do know is that they're going to come into a safe place, and they're going to be listened to. The vision, it's a big one. We do want to be the best alternative learning experience in the country. Middle School ALC, we focus on a commitment to citizenship and community through learning projects, experiences, and family engagement. And you'll hear a little bit about that today. So, right now, one of the big things that our team, along with the district representatives, have been working on is two kind of large areas. One, who's coming to the middle school ALC? What does that student look like? And how is it maybe different than we thought of traditional ALCs? I think we've seen a large change in the alternative learning model since 30 years ago. Like, 30 years ago, I think we can all agree it was where the bad kids went. Right, that's the reputation that an ALC has. That's not the case any longer. An ALC is exactly what it says. It is alternative learning for students who are struggling with the traditional model. So, it is a small percentage, because we know our traditional model, especially here in Rochester, is pretty damn good. So, we are able to educate a lot of our students in our traditional schools. The students we are looking for are students who are academically below grade level. They may have experienced physical or emotional abuse. They have mental health concerns. They might be recently in transition or homeless. Or they are withdrawn from school or chronically truied. So, again, we've been doing this for five years, using the same criteria, just under a different name. The one thing we do know is that most of our students come to us with a pretty significant amount of trauma. So, how are we making those decisions? That's really been the difficult part. What data sets do you look at? Where are we pulling these kids from? And I'll be honest, we're still working on all of that. We are partnering with the high school ALC and to come up with a like data sets, I guess you'd say, to pull from the middle schools so that we can discuss students with the middle school staff from the traditional middle schools. So, the things we look at right now is the overarching reason for the referral. Why are these students being referred? That has to take place in a conversation with the principals or the counselors or the social workers at the larger middle schools. The second thing we look at is, are we able to meet the needs of the student? We're still small. We're going to grow. Right now, we have three general education teachers. We have one special education teacher. We have a social worker, and we have a mental health practitioner. And we have four amazing ESPs that work very, very hard. We are not a special education placement. That is another kind of myth, along with the only the bad kids go here, or the tough kids. A lot of people believe then that also, this is for a lot of students on IEPs. We do take students on IEPs. But we have one teacher, one special education teacher. So, we are working hard to kind of filter those students and get them the correct interventions that they need. Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's not. Our number one priority at the school is the safety of our kids. We've found that when students feel safe, they reengage in school. And we could tell you numerous stories of that being the case with many of our students. So, because of that, again, I want to say, it's not a program for students with excessive behavior needs. This is a program where students struggle to walk in the doors of our bigger schools. They struggle to walk in the classrooms at our small school. Some start off in break rooms and work their way out. Some come in at nine o'clock, because at 8:30, that's a really nervous time for them, because everybody's getting breakfast, and they have to work through their anxiety. So, there's so many students that have a variety of triggers that we can't be running a school where there's a large amount of significant behaviors. One thing I wanted to say, and this is the perfect time to say it, is I was terrible starting off here, because I didn't even introduce my colleagues. I'm so sorry. This is Kristi Palmby. She's one of our general education teachers. And this is Erin Carstens. She's our social worker. And these two have been with me and with the program for five years now. So, we've done it all together, and they have an equal seat at the table. Actually, they are so much smarter than I am, so I go to them often for advice, and they are wonderful. So, that, you know, having these two here and the other staff that we have is absolutely critical. You have to have the right adults in place. And right now, we have the right adults in place. We talk daily about our students and the gifts that they're bringing into the classroom. We are working diligently to find the best way that these students learn. All of the academic teachers in our programming right now are going through the core literacy training. This is, I don't know that there's any other general education teachers in the district that are going through that at the moment. Don't quote me on that, but all of our teachers are going through it. So, Kristi, right now, is not only teaching every day, but then doing core training, which, if you've been through it or have heard about it, is, it's a lot of work. And lastly, there, our staff is committed to success of the whole child. And this is where Erin comes in on the social-emotional needs. She is an absolute expert. And she meets with our teachers daily to help bridge those social-emotional needs into academic success. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kristi to talk about what a day looks like.
So, what I love most about our days at school is our first initial interactions with the kids. In the mornings, all staff are either out in the hallways. We are at the front door. We have staff that are down by the lunchroom and are greeting our kids. Our faces are the first ones they see when they get off of that van, and they get a big, bright good morning and a smile. That is the connection that we have with those kids. It is amazing to see the change in just their demeanor the moment they see us. It warms my heart to no end, because we have created those connections with our students. So, when they get in the morning, we're always greeting them. They get breakfast. They go into the classroom. They have a little bit of downtime. The first thing that each of the teachers do in their classrooms is we start with morning circles. And this is a way for us to build community within our grade levels, so we're grade level homerooms. We foster strong relationships with the students, not only teacher to student, but student to student. And it also provides us the opportunity to gauge how our students are feeling that morning, the struggles that they have come to school with, and provide us with the information of how best to support them in that day. If I have a student that comes into my room and automatically I know this kiddo needs five minutes to himself, I'm gonna give him that five minutes because I know that those five minutes are going to turn into the rest of the day of them being actively engaged in the classroom. We create those caring and interaction, or interactions with the students to get those needs met so that their focus can be on the learning versus, okay, well, I didn't sleep last night. I didn't have breakfast, I didn't eat dinner last night. We are making sure that these kiddles are getting what they need so that the remainder of their day can be focused on their learning. When we look at the content areas, I teach science specifically as well as a section of math. We have one teacher that teaches literacy to all of our grade levels. We have a social studies teacher that teaches social studies to all of the grade levels. And all three of us provide math instruction along with our special education teacher. So, math is wonderful in the fact that we are providing extremely differentiated instruction for these students to meet them at the math skills they are currently at in order to grow those skills. We are currently using the program Alex, which is absolutely amazing for our kids because it is pinpointing the exact deficits in their skill base that we can fill and provide support for in order to grow their learning. For literacy, it is a co-taught class between our literacy teacher and our special education teacher. So, not only are the students on IEPs getting services within the literacy classroom, but they are also getting double the amount of knowledge, which is what I like, love about co-teaching. Student skills are, uh, their skill level is identified and there is a lot of individualized supports that are put into all of our classes. With social studies and science, the other teacher and I work very closely in figuring out where we can use cross-curricular topics into our social studies and science classes so that the kids are getting that more in-depth knowledge as well. We also have a time set aside at the end of the day for interventions to provide more targeted support in literacy and math.
Just as a side, most of our students are coming to us with significant deficits in math and literacy. So, so we, we figure we've got three years to, to get them ready for high school. And, and some are coming in at that second grade level. So, meeting them where they're at is, is, is vital.
And a lot of the practices from the core program are being utilized within the literacy block. Part of their time is spent on those fundamental skills of phonics and phonemic awareness. And then they are also going into the literacy, the comprehension, the novel studies. So, it is doubly used during that time.
And I think, just going back to our mission of really serving the whole student that comes into our building. Like Christie said, sometimes there are students who might come in and they didn't eat dinner or they didn't eat breakfast. Or, um, any number of things may have happened between the time they left our door in the afternoon and the time they walked back in. So, a really great thing about our school is we have such a robust, um, mental health support team. We have myself that's there full-time. We have a Fernbrook school linked to mental health therapist who's there three days a week. And we also have a mental health practitioner available to support our students who are on IEPs. And whether or not a student has formal mental health, whether it's through an IEP or, um, the formal services with our mental health, um, through Fernbrook, I'm available to any of our students at any time. And the, just community that we have, I mean, also Travis and Christie, all of our staff. If a kid is having a tough time, they come in and they say, I just need to talk to somebody. And we have break rooms that they can go into. We have students sometimes who have really significant trauma that we kind of are aware of that they're working through. And we can help them support, um, working in the break room and their teachers will provide instruction and give them some time to be able to do their work in that way. So that maybe being in the class isn't gonna be an option for them that day, but they're still really motivated to get their things done. And so, when they have that motivation and with the support, they can do it in a quiet space, somewhere that feels more comfortable to them. All of our classrooms have flexible seating, all of our classrooms have calm corners. We have a sensory room, two dedicated break rooms. And a lot of collaboration with parents. I know Travis is constantly talking with, um, our parents, kind of that back and forth of what was home like last night? Giving us a heads up on, you know, someone might be coming in, having experienced something really rough. And it's just really helpful for us to be able to work through that with not only our students, but our families. We've developed a, um, nutrition pantry. And so, some of our parents will come in and do those same things. But it's, we're so much more than academics and so much more than just the student.
So, to add on to the curricular things that we are doing in all of our classrooms, I am a part of our deeper learning team at Middle School ALC. And we are, have incorporated, um, three specific projects that we are working on this year. Last year, we had done blankets for the PICU at Mayo. This year, we continued that as well as some of our students making hats with a knitting machine for the NICU babies. And those hats are like teeny tiny and they loved it. We are also currently working on a, uh, unit for the Iditarot that is happening in Alaska. It starts on the second of March. So, students are learning about the background of native Alaskan groups and the climate of Alaska and the terrain of Alaska. And we're carrying it through each one of the classes. And then at the end of the year, we are hoping to create a cultural cookbook where each of our families send a recipe into school with their students. So, an interview would take place at home, they'd interview their family members. What's an important recipe or menu item that we eat at home that's important to our family? And why is it important to our family? And so, just learning about that background and that culture within their family as well as bringing that into school and sharing it with their peers. We do a lot of cooperative learning and collaboration amongst the students as well as the small group instruction that I had mentioned.
I, I think if you came and, and walked into one of our classrooms, you'd be, you'd be surprised that the, the kids are all working together. They become a family and they've come from all different places throughout the district, from all different backgrounds, through all sorts of trauma. And there they sit at the same table creating whatever they are creating that day. So, again, please, please, uh, come to the school and, and, and walk through sometime and I'm happy to, to have you there. Can I keep going on deeper learning?
Sure. So, with those deeper learning projects, we are implementing that project-based learning. Students are able to work together, solve problems, look deeply into the various issues or, um, community service things that they could involve themselves in and have something to show for it at the end with that project. We do a lot of online learning platforms, which I had mentioned. The biggest one is Alex, um, the math program that we use. It provides flexibility for students. It provides us with information about where they are currently at, how far they have come from the beginning of the year, how many skills they're working on, um, those various things. We work towards competency-based assessment, so mastery. If a student isn't getting something right now, it doesn't mean they never will. We provide them with those supports to work towards that mastery at whatever pace they are at. And then we do a lot of service learning projects, um, like our blankets.
So, that's a quick rundown of kind of how the year has been going thus far and, um, some of the things that have been put in place. We are still planning to, to grow. Of course, we are, we're kind of in the process of finding space to grow. Our current space only has so much, so much room there. But we do still hope by year three that, that we have a hundred and twenty students and we are a, a self-sufficient, um, school in the district here.
All right, comments for the numbers, Dr. Barlow?
I'm from Alaska, so you had me add my dinner on. But, um, so Travis, would you, right fit has been in existence for five years. Under funding, under that three-year plan, would you consider that you're in year one? I'm really asking more so from the point of view, what's your current enrollment there?
I'm gonna say we're, we're around forty. Because we have students going in and out so often. A lot of our students attend prairie care or other residential facilities. So, we're transitioning quite a bit. We will have, by the end of the year, we'll have forty-five.
And two other quick things, as I read through the information you provided for the board, under the social, emotional, and mental health programs, a, what, it would be nice to have, and I looked at the neural sequential model, how important that would be to actually have that. What I appreciated about that model is that it focuses on addressing the underlying neurological needs instead of reacting to the behavior, as, as of course you know. And you have referenced a lot about the stress and trauma that many of the kids experience. And, and so I appreciate knowing that you guys are identifying, uh, models and resources. And then lastly, under behavioral expectations and supports, I looked at the information you provided from Dr. Green, Collaborative Proactive Solutions. And I think that would be, uh, nice to, long-term aspirational, I think you referenced, to either, um, acquire staff training for that or to utilize, be it prairie care or a local, uh, private sector, vendor to help provide that for the students. I commend you on the great work you guys are doing. I will make it a plan and a priority to, uh, schedule a visit. I am curious, so would it be disruptive for us simply to, okay, so you would invite, okay. Thank you.
And if I could, I'd love to hear that you were interested in the neural sequential model. I went through the training last year and it's like something that we use within our, like, day-to-day and with our teachers.
And you're a social worker, right?
I am a social worker.
Was that part of your?
The district, um, sent, I want to say there were seven or eight of us last year who went through the full training. And there's a couple more people this year and one more person who is going through to become a trainer for the district this year.
Thank you.
Dr. McCall? From a non-educator, it seems like a lot of what you do is similar to the MTSS supports that the district is trying to do for everyone. Is that a good parallel or can you talk a little bit more about why that's so important to embed in your program?
Yeah, um, I think we are, we are on that list of MTSS supports, right? So, eventually, um, as you go through MTSS, you, you get to us as an intervention. And that's still kind of, that's where we're trying to figure out where we fit. And then within our own building, of course, um, our instruction is tiered within our own building too. I don't know if that answers your question.
So, you're kind of, kind of both?
Yeah.
In some ways.
We're part of the big system and we have our own, um, model in our building.
And thank you. And then one of the things I wanted to ask about is that project-based learning. One of the things that the legislators looking, legislature is looking at is modifying, and my colleagues might need to help me with this, the instructional, the, the title of instructional time. And can that be more flexible for things that aren't necessarily in the classroom? Would a modification of a statute like that be helpful to you either for the project-based or for the kids that are really struggling? That they can do things not necessarily in their seats, but getting credit for things they're doing, either like community service or other project-based things?
That would be incredible.
Do you understand what I'm talking about?
You know, for, for so long, learning has had a, a time and a place that is, um, supposed to take, take place, which is eight to three for nine months. And we know better than that and we know in the alternative setting that we have a lot of flexibility with that, so, yeah.
And I was originally thinking about it like high school students who have different things in their lives, but it, it would go down to middle school as well if, if kids need to be in, in somewhere else for whatever time, they can still do the things that you're working on and get credit for them.
Yes.
Dr. Whiteford?
So, I have a comment and then I have a question into all of the information that we've had tonight. Director Workman said something that had me pondering here for a moment. And she said something about her fourth grade, grade education. So, I'm not from the Midwest originally, I'm from New Jersey. And as I, I'm probably, I think everybody else was a little shocked, but to me, this looked exactly like my elementary school in the eighties. This is exactly the models that we grew up under. So, I am a child of a, of a vocational high school-based city in New Jersey, in Linden, Exxon plant there. And vocational high school, so all of our, uh, training from elementary school on up was very much intertwined that way. So, we always saw, uh, you know, cardiologists and the local police officers coming in. All of our, all of our education was always, everything was an opportunity to learn, I guess is the best way to put it. I was a candy striper. Believe, I know some people know what that is or not, but I was candy striper, you know, you, you go in and you're a mini nurse. And then I knew I didn't want to be a nurse. But, but I kind of grew up under that, that train of, of thought, a very community-based learning where the community was, uh, very constantly involved with the kids, which is maybe why I constantly harp, harp on the importance of that. The adults were just always right involved, you know, kids really didn't have to bring stuff because the adults were already aware, if this makes sense. So, I just want to commend that you are opening up to, to do this type of, um, education. As a, a child of that type of education from the eighties, um, it, it did me wonders. It really prepared me for real-life training. The, the education I got prepared me to work if I wanted to work or go to college if I wanted to go to college because of the real-life model. So, I do want to commend, um, those who are on the wisdom and, um, the, the ALC program. But I do have two questions. With the, um, Middle School ALC, is there a component to either prepare the kids to move in, back into the regular day? And again, I excuse my age because I, I did, I was one of those people that were like, ALC, you know, alternative, you're pregnant or young drugs, right? Well, that was the original model. But now that we are aware that there are so many things and even when you were reading off the list, there are so many children right now that like hit every single marker that you, um, identified that are struggling in school, struggling with attendance, struggling with mental health. We're aware that we have a very long waiting list for Fernbrook for the children that need services. We know you cannot accommodate all of the children. So, I guess is there kind of a, a rollover process where we're kind of saying we're getting kids in, we're getting them comfortable, we're gonna move them back into the system so that so that we're able to accommodate more kids? Are we looking at this, like, they're going to do six through eight here and, you know, and continue on? Because that does make a difference in, in how your model looks. And then also, how can the community support this? Because our kids are, you know, especially post-COVID, we, we have a lot of parents that are personally, that I know that are reaching out, that are kind of at their wits' end. And unfortunately, they feel like something bad has to happen before their kids can be accepted into other things. So what, what can the community do? How, how can we support this? You know, how can we proactively help something like this grow so that we do not have to continue to be reactive with our children, where they're to the point where they have attempted, you know, un-aliving or they are, you know, in a space now where they have to have intense treatment? Because we know there's a lot of things that happen before we get to that space. And I know you said that you don't want all those kids, obviously. You don't want a building full. But this is a real issue that we need to address. And, and how can we support your work? And how can we help to get kids better prepared to maybe move into the, to the bigger buildings? Is there, is there a plan for that?
Sure, oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, that was really limited.
Great, great questions. I'll go back to the, the fluidity question, if they can move back and forth. Each, each plan, each student's plan is different. So we work with the parents, we work with administrators from the other schools and kind of develop what they want to do. To be honest, though, most of our students, once they get there, they feel safe and they want to stay there. We don't have too many that, that end up leaving. So the other, the other piece of that question was, what happens after eighth grade? Most of our students will be referred to the high school ALC. But we do have some students that are going to go to the traditional high schools and they'll do great. As far as what can the community do? We do have some, I mean, that, that was a really, that's a big question and a, a great one. And I think continued partnerships with the community, especially, especially the, the county is a, is a really strong partner with us. Because unfortunately, they are getting these kids, right? And once they know our program, generally those students fit into what we're doing. But maybe that, that would be something that, that you and I could talk about at some point, too, just resources out there. We would love to, yeah, we would love to head it off before it gets bad, right? And then you got to try to figure out a new environment for them.
And then can I build off of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
To build off of community involvement as well, we have started a bike program. Do you want to talk about that? I don't want you to forget about the bike program.
We, we do have people coming in once a week and students who are interested get to learn how to fix the different parts of a bicycle so they can be their neighborhood bike guy. Or if, if one of our students wants to get a job and doesn't want to work fast food when they're 15 and wants to work at Eric's Bike Shop, then they have the skills to do that. So that's been really popular for some of our kids and a, and a great partnership for us.
Which, we're trying to bring them in.
Yeah.
It's just a slow process for us.
Superintendent?
Thank you, I'll be very brief. I know it's late and we have people from our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee waiting to brief. But to a public comment that my friend Helen made earlier, we don't answer during public comment, but also to Director Whitehorn's, we have posted a position to resuscitate our volunteer work. And so you're right, it is not robust. And that is one of the things community members could do. And so for somebody out there with a passion for volunteer work who wants to not just redesign our website, but help match people in the community to a place like middle school ALC, that is going to be a key leadership position that we've been lacking in recent years in RPS. And so I'm pleased to say that that is forthcoming and you gave me a chance to sneak it in because we don't respond to public comment. So thank you.
Director McLaughlin?
I just have one final thing that I wanted to mention earlier, that we talk a lot at the board table about the social and emotional learning and academic success. I love how you're putting that front and center and focusing on that for all of your staff. That that's really important here, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations and thanks for the progress. And we will be there.
See you in a year? Seems like we do this every February.
Sooner than that, we'll come visit. Next week.
Thank you.
All right, item 7.1 is our monitoring item, AIPAC vote on concurrence. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I know I've seen Guthrie Capacella, who's here from our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Amelia Cordell and Tucker Quitone, who are our liaisons to that community. I don't know if there are other colleagues. I don't see anyone else getting up. So thank you, Guthrie, for your leadership and your work. And I know you, the board has received your annual letter. And of course, we are eager to hear you personally highlight the priorities. The board will be responding in two meetings forthcoming. This, tonight begins the process of hearing from the committee and then the board will be taking up its response in subsequent weeks.
Perfect. I'll try to be quick because it's too late for coffee. I'm going to talk to you all as relatives and friends. I think I can call some of you guys friends, hopefully. I'm going to look down and read because, one, my handwriting is bad and, two, I, you know, this isn't my normal speech. So I'm here on behalf of the Rochester Public Schools American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for Annual Concurrence/Non-Concurrence Letter. This is not a verbatim reading, as you all have the copies of the full letter. Want to save some time. "We are grateful for our efforts of our American Indian staff, allied teachers, and the support of the school board. We appreciate the progress towards last year's goals. We, the descendants of the first people of the United States, recognize our Central and South American Indigenous relatives during this difficult time. Indigenous people of South and Central America are important to our school community as all of our first and second-gen immigrants are. Families and students are worried about their relatives making it home every day. Indigenous communities have always supported and honored those who are on the sexuality continuum. We have students worried about their safety as LGBTQ, Two-Spirit in the district. This community are our brothers, sisters, nephews, and nieces. We see you and love you for who you are. We appreciate the district's stance on equity for our students. We see all of the RPS students as relatives and appreciate the educational equity initiatives that help keep those learners in the classroom and thriving. As Native advocates, we worry about the future of our school programs that support our most vulnerable relatives. We support all of our school district toos by ed and support RPS on its current path towards educational equity. We reviewed and discussed the district's progress regarding the areas previously identified and reaffirm these recommendations to continue the positive support for Native students and their family partnerships. One, HR to continue attending American Indian hiring events. We ask that the part-time liaison become a full-time liaison." "Three, provide RPS American Indian education-approved and appropriate professional development to all staff on Indigenous ways of learning and being as well as increase expectations for faculty attendance." It's good to hear about that surplus budget there. "Support teachers, AIPAC members, and students to attend national, or to attend Native educational conferences. Establish an elders and residents program. Conduct regular meetings with school board members and AIPAC to establish and maintain positive relationships. In addition to the initiatives carryover, we also recommend support for Native students and families new to the district. Immediately create support plans in collaboration with the liaisons, liaisons to ensure cultural responsiveness. Lastly, create transitional plans for Native students rising in sixth and ninth grade, our middle school and high school transitions. And I'm happy. Thank you all for your continued leadership for our Rochester school community."
Point members, any questions or comments? Director Marvin?
First, a comment. I really appreciate that although this is about Native people, that you have made it so inclusive and support all our children. So I, I appreciate that. Second, and this is just pragmatic. When you mentioned that you want to conduct regular meetings with school board members, absolutely. And I think, I can speak at least on behalf of the Community Engagement Committee, please let us know when and where, how, rather than us telling you, we'll show up at a meeting whenever. Please let us know how we can best have that kind of relationship and communication. You don't have to do it right this minute.
No.
It, it, it's not a time for us to respond formally, but Director Marvin, I wanted to say Amelia and Will Ruffin II that I met today on these issues. We, we need to put some administrative support behind that effort that we had when Lori Sam was in that job, coincidentally, a previous member of AIPAC. And so we're going to put that back in place. So we need to make sure we're, you all are busy, they are busy. We need to facilitate that. And so we're going to provide some support from my office for that this next year.
Thank you.
I just have kind of a procedural question through our Q and A. Did this group get our questions or not?
No, we'll be integrating that into dialogue about the response.
Okay.
Comments, board members?
I guess the only thing I wanted to add about that is that the question I add, I asked talked about the increasing the 0.5 to a full. I just want you to know that I support that. It reminds me back to, I think it's the first question I asked at a, in a question to the prior superintendent, when it was increased from one to 1.5, why aren't we going to two? And the answer was, it's going to 1.5. And I was not satisfied with that answer, so I'm hoping we have a better answer this time.
Director Marlowe?
And I just wanted to thank you for, we don't know what we don't know. And so thank you for continuing to keep the dialogue flowing this way. And my desire is that our responses to AIPAC will, you always feel that we're responsive to the concerns and not just responding because we have to, but legitimately showing our hearts and acknowledging that we're hearing what you're saying. So thank you.
I appreciate the history and the experience that is at the table. Guthrie from, known you probably the longest, and then Amelia and her more recent leadership. I, I too am looking forward to figuring out opportunities, not just to meet when AIPAC is meeting, but maybe to see a little bit more of what you're doing in the buildings that you, that you share with us. And, and I appreciate the recognition of that it's an ongoing process and that we've made progress, but we, we still have, have places to go. And your commitment as well, not only to the students, but bringing the voices of the families in through the work on the committee. Because as we've heard from a few speakers tonight, that is very important for our student success. So thank you. Director Whitehorn?
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I do hope that we can move this also into the community more as well. I think that the, the, the children could really benefit, you know, from seeing our faces, just not at these board meetings, but actually seeing us all working together in a community. I think there's a, there's a big benefit to that. And to mirror what, what's that pastor? Director Marlowe had to say there. I do think that, you know, we don't know what we don't know, but I think this is a fantastic opportunity for education. And I would hope that maybe we could also partner with some of the other grassroots organizations in our community so that we can help, to help you all grow your mission as well.
All right, we will see you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a five-minute break.
That would be lovely. We have a request for a recess for five minutes. A recess at 7:53 PM.
We have a five-minute break.
That would be lovely. We have a request for a recess for five minutes, a recess at 7:50, 3:00 P.M.
Good morning.
Family and they love the education that their students receive there. Teachers on the calendar, we don't leave. They'll have to drag me kicking and screaming out of that place. Not only because of the calendar itself, but because of the people that it attracts. We are very close knit and the calendar allows us to be rested and rejuvenated. And that makes us better teachers for our students.
This year, we had the great fortune of welcoming in our Pinewood friends. So Pinewood joined us on the traditional calendar. One of the greatest benefits for us is a collaboration amongst colleagues. We have an opportunity to connect with other colleagues in grade, same grade levels and further our collaboration. But our students have really enjoyed meeting new friends as well. The building, as you know, is a beautiful new facility. We've been so blessed to be there and utilize the amazing spaces. And now even more students and families and educators can also have access to this building. With us being on the forty-five fifteen calendar and Pinewood on the traditional calendar, the building really has an even flow throughout the entire calendar year. So I really think it's a great benefit that we're able to utilize that space throughout the entire year. We also house Boys and Girls Club out of this building and SAC as well, and we're having more and more community events that are housed in this beautiful facility. One of my greatest celebrations is in January, we had school and Pinewood was off and the Longfellow students in the lunchroom were really sad because their Pinewood friends weren't there that day. So it really is a testament to the bonds that the students are able to form and the friendships that they've been able to build with their Pinewood friends. As I mentioned, the Minnesota Department of Education does require that we reapply to the state every three years to gain permission to continue on this flexible learning year. And there's several different components that are involved in this application. First and foremost, it talks about the rationale. Why do you want to follow this calendar? And again, it's to improve instructional quality. But I would also argue that it has great benefits for our students' learning, greater retention. And as Lester mentioned, we have a really strong community because we're not away from each other for all that long at one point in time. Our students do have access to intercession programming. It has changed over the years. Currently, we are offering academic intervention for students in grades two through five and some care for those students as well. In years past, we have had access to some funding sources that provided wraparound care for our students before and after that academic intervention. We're looking at creative ways that we can bring back some of those opportunities with community partnerships and some other funding sources to provide that care during our three-week breaks. Our students continue to have access to lunch and breakfast during those breaks as well. And that's a piece to that application that we do need to address as well. They want to make sure that students are connected and have access to their resources, whether they're in session or they're out of session. Because our breaks do fall at a different time than the rest of our community. They do require public forums and stakeholder feedback, which has been incredibly invaluable for our team. One, it provides celebrations that our families are able to share with us. But also it provides great information that we can learn and grow from as a learning community of ways that we can strengthen the forty-five fifteen calendar learning community as well. Part of our process tonight is also to take a look at our calendar for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year as well. And the MDE does require that we submit three years of calendars to show when our start date and end date would be. And so I've collaborated with Carl Bachan and with other cabinet members to design the calendar. And that too is part of the process with our application that we hope to put forth to all of you and for the approval as well.
I'd like to share a few celebrations from Longfellow. The Panorama survey data that was collected from our third through fifth graders in the fall of twenty twenty-four indicated that our students have a positive perception of our school climate, a higher sense of belonging, and they feel safe at school. Longfellow students have a higher rate of attendance. Seventy-nine point two percent attend school more than ninety percent of the time. Fifty-eight point five percent of our Longfellow third through fifth graders met or exceeded grade level expectations in math. And forty-seven point eight percent met or exceeded grade level expectations in reading. Sixty-nine point seven percent of Longfellow ML students made progress toward their target. And we feel proud of the fact that those are above the state and district averages.
Part of the stakeholder feedback that I mentioned before, with every calendar and program, there are some obstacles or problems to be worked through and solved. So we really appreciated that feedback. We did it in multiple different ways. We did send up surveys to families. Also during our conference time with our bilingual specialists, we were also able to survey families with their native language to find their feedback and input as well of what's working for them and what are some obstacles that we need to work through. One of the challenges that was mentioned was transport that has changed in the years. So currently thirty percent of our students live in our direct attendance boundary and Longfellow does have an attendance boundary. So if they live in the area, they're assigned to Longfellow unless they would prefer to follow the traditional calendar and they just need to let us know and we can accommodate that. Gratefully, we're in the same building, so we still have the opportunity to serve that family whether they choose the traditional or the balanced calendar. So families have opted in from the greater Rochester area, might access the hub busing, opportunities that are throughout Rochester, but many do self-transporting at seventy percent. We've seen a lot of carpooling with families that have attended Longfellow, had transportation before, but what they've shared was they really wanted to stay with us and we're going to do whatever it took to stay. Because they really appreciate the relationships that they've built, the high expectations academically and also for how they are working within the community as well. In years past, childcare has been a bit of a struggle for some families on those three-week breaks. And we're proud to share that we've partnered with the Boys and Girls to really strengthen and offer and expand their programming right at Longfellow. So they currently are providing programming for seventy students right on site. And then during the three-week breaks, they do have opportunities for families to attend during the nine-to-five school time. Now that it's earlier, it's from eight to five. They did open up earlier for our families as well. SAC also has expanded their programs. We're really grateful for the efforts of the district to expand staffing for SAC as well. That's provided greater opportunities for our families to have access to childcare during those breaks too. We see great benefits from the balanced calendar. As Lester mentioned, not many people leave once they join. This is my sixth year on the calendar and it is amazing to me the benefits that both our students, staff, and families share with us. So we have termed ourselves what we're going to call an innovation lab. Since we started in July, we are oftentimes the first to begin and pioneer different efforts within the district. So as I heard, we heard a lot about wit and wisdom tonight. We too are thoroughly enjoying this program. And it's just amazing what we're seeing from our students and volunteers have also come in to share with me when they're in the classroom. It's just incredible the work. But our teachers took the charge to start in July with wit and wisdom and we were grateful that we were able to partner with Mona and Heather too to share reflections of what was going well with wit and wisdom and maybe some pieces we hadn't really thought about too. With our staff, they're very open and excited to learn and share those lessons as well with the cabinet members and district leadership. So we can work together for the rest of our colleagues that start in late August. We talk about that balance word and it's really through and through for staff and students. Our students do have summer. Some people don't always know that, but they do have summer. It is shortened, so it's six weeks. And so we really feel like there's a greater retention of skill with that shorter summer. The breaks are never too long. And what I see from students coming in in July is they haven't forgotten how to do school. It's kind of like they jump right back in and they're ready to roll and the teaching staff as well, the procedures are already in place so we can get down to the great learning that takes place. Our staff also have shared that they have opportunities to access professional development when we're on break. Oftentimes I hear of our staff members going out and visiting other classrooms, even within the district on the traditional calendar that are in session when we're on break. So they have an opportunity to collaborate with other staffs throughout the district too. And vice versa as well. We will receive calls for folks to come on over in July and August to see how is wit and wisdom even starting for you? What are your boards look like and your room setup and just gather information and advice from them as well. So we feel like it's an awesome opportunity for our staff, our students, and our families as well. Next steps, we hope to obtain approval from the school board. Then we would move forward with, if so, we would move forward to submitting it to Minnesota Department of Education. They do ask that we provide a progress report each August to the Minnesota Department of Education and we really appreciate that. It's a time to reflect, celebrate, and then set goals too for our staff and our students. So again, all of our goals that we provide to MDE to just build on that skip process too. We really put that at the heart of our work with our students and with our families. And so it's a wonderful way for us to combine that skip process with the application that we have the opportunity to submit to the Minnesota Department of Education.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Nobody. Well. What can I, or do you want to go? You go first.
Well, I just want to say that what Longfellow did to welcome Pinewood, I think, was extraordinary. And from all the feedback that I've heard and being and visiting the building, I mean, it was the community that you've really built intentionally, both, coming from both ways, was really, really great. And I'm awfully glad to see that the Pinewood name is on the building now. In case anybody was, had asked us for that, it is officially on the building. I saw it in the picture. When you encounter families, what, do you have a sense of what family's biggest obstacle or concern is about the forty-five fifteen calendar? And is there anything we can do in our district communications to help dispel that? You said one of the things was, oh, they get no summer vacation. They do. They get six as opposed to the nine, but anything?
No, I honestly feel like a lot of the conversations I have with families that might be hesitant to try is just that they've never tried it before. It's so foreign to those that live in Minnesota who've been on that traditional calendar. We had a family that came to tour this year and they, forgive me, I'm going to draw a blank at the country that they joined us from, but all of their schools follow a forty-five fifteen calendar and they were so excited that we had that opportunity. So I do think it's just a change of mindset that it can operate on a different way and a different mold. The next two would be transportation and then the childcare. And I think that we are, you know, with our community partners, we've been able to remedy that and really offer some great programming too. And I would say lastly, but not least, once you have siblings that then go on to middle school, if they're on a traditional calendar and the younger student is on the balanced calendar, it can create a little bit of a hiccup for families to operate. But we have lots of families that have done it and said it really hasn't been that difficult. In fact, it's kind of nice for one child not to be wrong the other one. For a little bit, so it's kind of a nice break. And back to your point about Pinewood, I have to say too, I am just incredibly grateful for Heidi Howe, the principal and leader of Pinewood. It's been such a blessing to have a partner to work through and the Pinewood community too was so welcoming and, you know, to collaborate and connect with us. So we welcomed them when they came and then we went on on fall break and then when we came back, they welcomed us back. So it was really, really cool to see that reciprocity. And we're planning more and more family events for all families to get together. And that too has continued to just grow that positivity and that great relationship amongst each other.
Director Whitehorn?
So I do just have two questions. One, in your application process, there's a line that says there's one week of additional academic instruction for a percentage of the grades. So can you just elaborate, like what is that? What do you mean by that?
Yeah.
And then my second question is how is enrollment for Longfellow? Because I'm hearing that we are trying to encourage maybe families to attend. Are you guys seeing a decrease in enrollment? Is there an ask or is there something that community members or we can do to continue to help the school?
I can address a couple of the pieces there. That's a great question. We look at students for intercession programming that have the greatest need in terms of academic intervention. And we have done a lot of partnering with community partners on community-based technical skills that they can learn and grow from as well. So it's really under teacher discretion and it comes down to funding too. We really need to look at our funding and how many students we're able to service during that time. I would say too, another piece that we really are thoughtful about now is space during intercession. Now that we share a building, we have around six hundred and forty students total, which is amazing, but it is less space for us to utilize during intercession. We used to have the gym and other common spaces too. And so that's another factor that we need to bring into play in considering how many students we can service during that time. And then I would say, you know, the enrollment, we have lost a few students and primarily they shared with us that it was because of the transportation. They may have had busing and came from a broader area in the city, but now that they don't have access to the broader transportation, it was just too challenging for them. Coupled with the new start times, it was really hard for them to get down to school by the time that we started.
And I will say also that I've had some families that I taught in the past that now have kids in school. And they live in the neighborhood and the new location is not as walk-in friendly as the old location was. To cross Marion Road, it is much more difficult for some of the people that we used to serve.
And you said that, so the intercession piece, that's just something that's unique to the forty-five fifteen?
Correct.
Okay. And it's kind of at your discretion. There's not a set number. There's so many kids have to do additional.
Yeah, we send out invitations and then families can opt in or they can say they're not able to make it or they're not interested. And so it's, we try to invite at least sixty students to see how many we can get and then, you know, we'll see how many can attend during that time.
And I don't want to harp on it, but what is the reasoning for behind that?
Right. So added academic intervention, you know, I will say that our students also have access to the summer programming that happens in June and July too, which is wonderful. So this intercession is actually above and beyond even the summer programming in the regular calendar too. So, you know, years back when it started, it was all day. So it was academic intervention and then it was afternoon activities as well. But as the funding sources have changed through the years, there hasn't been as much access to it. But it was a really strong opportunity back then for more students to be there, even on the breaks for the full three weeks for the full day too.
Which was one of the reasons we went to forty-five fifteen, because those breaks gave us that flexibility to work with some of those students.
I think it may be helpful, Director Whitehorn, that the state requires us to offer it similar to the way we are required to offer a summer school for a traditional school. So all kids don't have to attend summer school, but we have to offer it. We're pleased to offer it. And so this is the similar requirement for the schools. There's only four schools left in Minnesota right now that have the forty-five fifteen calendar. And so those schools are required to offer intercession programming, just as we for the traditional schools offer.
Also is it one week after each session?
Filling the gap.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Edith.
Thank you.
I do think it's, this is a, this is the quintessential can of worms, but we're not going to get into it tonight. I do think it's important for board members to know that I would not be, first of all, I'm thrilled about what's happening at Longfellow. I personally like the forty-five fifteen model a lot. I actually would have struggled with recommending that you submit approval for the calendar again. Were I not confident that we need to take a deep look at our transportation system as part of the next strategic plan? That is, as we've all learned, incredibly complex, challenging. But when you have seventy percent of the families self-transporting to Longfellow and other schools, we had to cut the district-wide option transportation to get to the new start times. There was no alternative. We would still be at nine twenty-five if we hadn't done it. This school and others paid a price for that. Those families had an impact. It was unavoidable. I don't believe we've gotten to the new system that sets Longfellow and other schools up, to Director Whitehorn's question, with an adequate enrollment opportunity to maintain viable enrollment. Now, what will that look like? I have ideas, but that will be a major effort that I would be asking you to approve as part of a new strategic plan. In the interim, you're doing great work. In the interim, I think this program should continue. Three years from now, I think this school would be really struggling if we don't look at the transportation. And it's not just for Longfellow and the other district-wide option schools. It actually is for all of our schools, to be sure that all of our schools have a cost-effective but broad way to recruit and retain a diverse and sufficient student body to fund their programs. So that's a down payment on a very, very big discussion. But if I didn't believe we needed to do that and if I wasn't confident that we can find a new structure, I candidly would probably say I don't think we can recommend sustaining this. I do think we can create the context in which a program like this can succeed, but we have some heavy lifting to do to make that viable for the longer term. So thank you for letting me give a preview of coming attractions there.
Director McLaughlin?
I'm not sure that we covered the question earlier that sort of relates to that. In the sense that I kind of think back when I was looking at options with a kindergartner, that in terms of like communicating about how the intercessions work. That I was a working parent and I looked at that. I'm like, what do I do about that? And I couldn't get past that. So I think it's that communication piece about how, and that was, you know, years ago now, that I think it sounds like it's so much better. But that communication of how working parents can integrate that into their thoughts when they're making those choices. I think there's so many benefits of this with the retention, but I just couldn't get over the, I can't take that much time off during the middle of the year. So I think that's, I think that's, that piece, I think, I think you're doing great work with it, but if there's more ways to communicate that, the better.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right. We'll be back for an action item on this on March fourth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is prep for action as well. Scheduled to take action on this item at the March fourth meeting, the Boys Volleyball Cooperative, Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you. I'd invite Dan Christoffer, who's our Activities Director at Mayo High School. Dan is in some ways speaking for his colleagues at Century and John Marshall. Very importantly, board members, we are asking you tonight to learn about and consider approving a cooperative agreement in a new sport across our high schools. We are actually not asking you to authorize the launch of this new sport. That is actually in my authority as superintendent per State High School League rules. And I've already told the Activities Director that I think we ought to pilot boys volleyball. As you'll hear about in a moment, it has opened some doors to a lot of young men who don't necessarily already participate in other sports and we have some interest. Of course, I would keep you fully apprised of how well that is going and things like that. But we do need your approval to submit the cooperative agreement that we believe is essential to make this work. Because we do not have an adequate number, we think, at least in the early years, of boys to field a team in any individual high school. So we're asking you to consider approving the co-op. I am sufficiently impressed by the data and information that Dan and his colleagues have pulled together to give a green light to launching a three-year trial of this sport to see if we do have the level of student interest that we think we'll have. So thanks, Dan, and look forward to getting the update for the board.
Awesome. Thanks for having me. Okay, so purpose obviously, this meeting is to seek approval for the co-op between Mayo, John Marshall, and Century. The co-op would be between these three schools only. It will be identified by the Minnesota State High School League as Rochester, Mayo, John Marshall, and Century. We believe in doing this provides new opportunities for student engagement, fosters a sense of school spirit and community, supports both the physical and social development of our students, offering a positive outlet for their energy, foster positive mental health, teamwork, and leadership. This is a graph on the growth of boys volleyball within the state. This was data pulled from the club participation in what was presented to the Minnesota State High School League to make boys volleyball a sanctioned sport. You can see from two thousand eighteen, right around four hundred boys participating to two thousand twenty-three, almost two thousand. And this leads us to kind of our projected numbers for boys volleyball. Approximately about forty-four boys in the club scene. Mayo had a team and then John Marshall, Century, and some of the surrounding communities had a club team. These are anticipated numbers, you know, that we got from obviously that club level. We do not really have accurate numbers for the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students because they weren't as involved at that time yet with the club scene. We anticipate obviously these numbers to continue to grow. One of the questions that, you know, was provided by the board was, you know, how many do we need to obviously if those thirteen seniors, excuse me, graduate? What do we have to keep it afloat? JV, varsity, you know, likely we would love to have twelve to fifteen per team as an average or higher, but we can operate even down to about that ten to twelve per team as needed. The goal of this off, as well, is to look to foster the growth to all three schools. Budget costs for RPS and our booster clubs. The cost will come from existing budget from the, from the three high schools. Coaches' salaries, approximately ten thousand to twelve thousand. Officials, right around twenty-three hundred. Casual workers, around seventeen fifty. Transportation is right around eight thousand. Equipment, eight hundred. The, the nice thing with equipment, we can utilize a lot with what we use with the girls' team. The balls are different, so obviously that would be one of the costs. Jerseys, about a thousand dollars. Entry fees, around six hundred. Our year-one intentions with this is we're getting started late with this. Having less overall games, approximately eleven to twelve, as well as two invites. A number of contests allowed for boys volleyball is going to be right around that four, it's going to be fourteen plus three invites. So we'll go a little bit less with that, as well as securing more home games, which as previous presentations have said, you know, transportation's an issue as well as transportation costs for our budget. So this would obviously keep, keep those costs down. Kind of going into a little bit more of the finance piece, which was another question provided. Year-one costs obviously being down. This is a low operating budget sport. Mr. Andy Crowsted provided a statement as well that I'd like to read. I think you guys were provided as well. But the budget assumes all expenditures will be paid for by the district. It includes twelve thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars of estimated revenue from participation fees and gate admissions. Expenses are estimated at twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, primarily from coaches' salaries, which is about fourteen thousand four hundred, and transportation at eight thousand. Fundraising by a booster club would be used to offset a portion of the currently estimated year-one subsidy of sixteen thousand twenty dollars. The district will need to cover any remaining program loss from activities budgets. One of the, in response to part of your other finance question, all other activities, you know, will be funded as normal and nothing will be underfunded. Incoming, excuse me, income and fundraising. Sports fees are, we increased the fee a little bit with this to two twenty-five. The spring sports average is about two fifteen, which is what, you know, we have for our track and field athletes. Gates, eight hundred dollars an event. This is probably a lower estimate. Girls volleyball averaged right around twelve hundred for us. This will help obviously cover the cost of officials, casual workers, and coaches' salaries. The booster club and team fundraising, approximately about ten thousand dollars. This is the anticipation that they feel that they would need for an operating budget to help support the sport. These funds will help pay for some of the transportation, entry fees, equipment, and jerseys. Forgiving donation site, business donations, team fundraisers are all ways to generate funds. And going into kind of the conditions document that was provided to you guys as well. This, as Dr. Pecal alluded to, this is a three-year trial that we're looking at with, with boys volleyball. This is a new approach with new sports being added. We want them to show the growth, the sustainability and financial stability. Help share some of the costs as a startup, most importantly, kind of that transportation part. Other costs that they're responsible for are the same for all the other programs, which is going to be the jerseys, equipment fees, and entry fees. This is consistent with other programs that we've started. This is consistent with other programs that we've started previously with lacrosse, alpine ski. We'll have an evaluation at year three to see what the growth is of that new sport. The approval process by our Superintendent, obviously, by you as the School Board, and then approval by the Big Nine Conference and Region 1A. Due to our time constraints with the start of the season, March 17th, we have secured preapprovals from the Big Nine Conference and Region 1A already. The Minnesota State High School League requires a 30-day window before to approve co-ops. I have already reached out, and we do have an extension with that right now. They have given preliminary approval, obviously, dependent on our, our School Board approval. In conclusion, excited, we're offering boys volleyball. It's a growing sport in Minnesota, and we're, we're excited to see kind of where this takes off. We request your support for co-op as we provide a successful entry of this sport into our district. Thank you.
Dr. Marvin?
Two questions. First, would the Rochester team be playing only Big Nine teams? I mean, it looks like there's a whole lot of teams in Minnesota, but are there, how many of the Big Nine schools have a boys volleyball team?
Two.
So where were there other?
So it would be ourselves in Austin currently. Like I said, this is going to continue to grow within the region. So we, so I've worked on trying to obviously secure games already, so we're playing some of the city teams. I have secured more home games this year than what we normally would, like I said, to kind of keep costs down. So, for example, we're going to play, like, New Prague. We're going to have a Farm, our invites are going to be in Farmington and Lakeville. We have, like, Minnesota, Minneapolis, Roosevelt coming down. We, we're going to play Southwest Christian. So a lot of the metro schools will, were primarily, this sport has really taken off.
Okay, thanks for that. And the second question is, it's going to depend a little bit on booster clubs helping with the money. There's, there's an imbalance in the number of students who are interested in this, and by the way, I think extracurricular is great, and this is sort of a nonviolent one, so I love that. But it's, there's an imbalance in the number of students who've shown an interest at the three high schools. Will each booster club expect to come up with about the same amount as the other two?
No, so currently, right now, we don't have a booster club formed yet with the boys volleyball. That's something that we're going to continue to grow. Right now, it's going to be them, them raising that money as a, as a group with all three teams. But the potential and long-term solution, I think, would be is that we will help, you know, foster those numbers at all three schools. The ultimate goal would be, obviously, to have programs at all three schools.
Dr. Huck?
Am I correct that, that now is the time to begin enrolling for, since this is a spring sport?
Correct. We began registration on Monday, and so obviously, I've had to hold off on that until School Board approval. So, there's a lot of working things. I've got to obviously make the schedule public, work on busing and transportation stuff, and so there's a lot of things, moving parts, that obviously, we'll be waiting on until, you know, obviously, this is approved.
Yeah, because March 17th is going to come up quick, so that's exciting. The only thing I was wondering about this is whether there is anything in particular that we should, or maybe already have considered regarding Title IX and the, the need to provide equal opportunities between different gender-specific sports and whether there's anything to share about that, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, yeah, and we certainly have looked into that, and there currently is 13 male sports offered, and we have 15 female sports offered.
Oh, I see, okay.
Dr. Barlow?
So, you'd mentioned that the 44 individuals currently are part of club teams?
Correct.
Okay. And so are they going to drop out of their clubs and enroll in the RPS school offerings?
Yeah, so we currently will not, so Mayo High School moved from the club scene to transitioning into the, the first year of sanctioned sport with the Minnesota State High School League, so there's no longer a club option at, for the Mayo High School team.
And will the, where are all the home games be played?
So the home games will be at Mayo High School, and our practice is going to be, currently is going to be out at the National Volleyball Center.
So all proceeds will be shared equally and contributing toward the success and longevity of the volleyball program? And then in terms of recruitment or advertisement as to the, this new program, how are you envisioning letting the word be made known?
So, I guess we're rewarded that as far as advertisement for?
How, how will students know? I mean, Superintendent, I think, a new opportunity for students who perhaps have not been otherwise involved or engaged. I would venture to say that probably the majority of potential volleyball players are probably participating in other sports have. There may be some new ones that will certainly, you know, this may be what they're looking for. I'm just curious as to how we will ensure that there's good representation?
Yeah, definitely. So I think, obviously, social media is a good way to, to share the word. Flyers, obviously, them coming to games, you know, us, you know, the post about it. I think there's an excitement already within the, the three different schools about boys volleyball, not only from the ones that participated in the club scene, but others that want to give it an opportunity and a try. So I think the word has already kind of been spreading already in our three schools. So, and we all know, like, word of mouth is probably one of the best ways to, to advertise, right? And I think that, that's already happening.
And then my final question deals with the fee. Do you think, I think, $215 is a spring, the going rate for spring sports, right?
Correct, yeah.
And you're proposing, not you, but it's being proposed that $225 be the participation fee for student athletes who choose to come out for volleyball? Will that potentially cause us to maybe miss a few, or will potential scholarship opportunities still be made available even though this is kind of stretching current budgets?
Yeah, so scholarship opportunities will exist just like it does for all of our sports. So, those, those individuals will obviously still have that opportunity. We had the price at a little bit higher just because it is a startup. We actually started with a much higher entry fee, but then have, have brought it down just because we felt that exactly, you know, enticing individuals to be able to come down.
Thanks, man.
We thought that was a good price point to start with.
Dr. Whitehorn?
So, given the issues that we are currently having with transportation, I was going to ask a very similar question to Director Barlow. What, what is the plan for that? Because you will, you will have students at JM or students at Mayo, given our strains we're already having with transportation, and not to say that we don't, but there's not a lot of kids to say that we're, you know, how, what is the plan behind that? Because it, it seems difficult to be able to say it's all-inclusive when, you know, we have, you know, it kind of excludes kids that aren't able to get all the way across town to Mayo High School after school, you know, from Century or from JM or to a game or from Mayo to Century for, for practice, you know? Is there a, do you have a, a plan or a tentative plan either through coaches or, like, how, how do you intend to address that? Because that will directly impact whether or not kids can participate. If they, if they can't get there, it doesn't matter if they want to do it or not, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll start. So as far as games are concerned, we would continue to do as we do with all of our other co-ops. So, for example, if, or with our, with our middle school kids that, that join, so our, the bus would have multiple stops to, to pick up those individuals. As far as with, within the practice scene, it wouldn't be at Mayo High School, it would be at the volleyball center. We, we had it there as far as, so it would be a, a space that, you know, we, we'd have more room and more availability there. We haven't come up with exactly, and that's a great question, as far as those individuals that may not be able to attend because of transportation.
Well, and the games may be, I'm sorry, the games may be more accessible, but my concern is the, the kids will need to be at practice in order to be in the games. You know, I'm sure parents can sometimes find a way to get their kids to game, but we're talking about three or five times a week practice that becomes unmanageable, you know, than trying to get just an Uber over to the game, you know, if there's not a way for these kids to get, you know, from John Marshall all the way to Century or from Mayo all the way to Century.
Director Whitehorn, the goal would be to grow, grow teams at all three schools, and we just have to start somewhere. And so if we don't start with a co-op, we won't be able to get a State High School League sanctioned team. So you're absolutely right, it will not be fully accessible in the way we would all like, but one would hope that if it catches on, we actually can grow the sport so it's in all three of the schools. There's, were we to try and start busing kids to practice for our co-ops, which we have others, it would be unsustainable expense, and we probably couldn't get the drivers either. So, this is a beginning, and one would hope that we could grow it, so it could be at JM, could be at Century, could be at Mayo, potentially, if it catches on.
And not to, not to start a firestorm, but what, what does the, what does the diversity or what does that look like in our, in our other, in our other co-ops? And I'm, I'm asking this nicely, you know, but, you know, I, I get the, the point of us saying that it, it needs to grow, but my concern is that if we start anything that becomes, for lack of better words, elitist, because we, we only have certain kids that are able to get there, how, how do we plan to diversify it later on? Because, you know, diversity wasn't considered at the onset, right? Because we, we already know that we are being exclusory by the way the setup is. So, I mean, we, we're all being honest here, that we already know that there are young men that may want to participate who will not be able to participate, so it's already set up in an exclusory form. And I, and I understand we have to start it somewhere, but I think there is trouble in trying to say we're going from this exclusive, you know, situation, and now we want to diversify, you know? So I, I just think it's something we need to get thought to, even when we're beginning things, because we don't want those stigmas attached to certain groups or certain sports because they start off in that, in that way, if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I, I would state with that, that, you know, we had a projected little over 40% diversity within our Rochester teams already, and they were already competing on a club level, which was all over, and so they had to make those transportation needs, and they had to, you know, so they're already doing it, you know?
I just wanted to make sure we're creating it.
Well, I appreciate the point, we'll be, we'll be attentive to that over time.
Director McLaughlin?
Would it be procedurally proper and helpful if we move this to action tonight?
Are you reading my mind? You know I'm a stickler about prep for action and action, but if that is a desire of the Board, we can always have a motion to put the resolution on the table.
I would make that motion and make it clear that it's about the cooperative agreement, that that's what the Board approves.
I can read the resolution for you. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve a co-op agreement between Century, John Marshall, and Mayo High School for boys volleyball commencing in March 2025 through the end of spring season 2027. So do I hear you'd like to move that to action?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. Do you have any discussion, Director Barlow?
Yes, and Dan, correct me if I'm, if I am wrong. I thought you communicated to us that you've been in communication with MSHSL, Minnesota School, High School League. And they are aware of our schedule, and that they were good with that, and have tentatively said, you're good, or we're good, right?
Correct, yep. So I reached out to them to say, you know, obviously, that we're underneath that, that 30-day window, and that I had it on the docket to obviously present to you guys tonight, and that we had provisionary status right now. And then they said, depending on School Board approval.
Good work, Ben. Yeah, I, I've been thinking about this. So will the three schools split the cost evenly, even though there are quite a few more at one high school than another?
Yes, so we, and I'll work with our finance department with this. Whether we do it a third, a third, a third, or if we do it, you know, within our, our overall district dollars that we would share, yes, it would be split up equal between the three schools.
And the, the follow-up question to that is, if there is less funding than you are anticipating raising, can the schools actually make up that difference?
Correct.
They can?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Crockstead and, and our group looked, looked at that, and we would be able to, if, obviously, we want the, the booster club or the, them to fundraise and be able to help support, but we would be able to make that, that necessary funds.
And then the, the third question I have is, is this generally an expectation amongst sports that they have a, a fundraising group to offset costs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. All of our teams have a school board, or, excuse me, school board, sorry, have a, have a, a group either within their fundraising, which they put into their, their ten account, or they, they have a booster club that they, they work through with that, which is primarily more for their jerseys, their entry fees, sometimes helping with some of the transportation and as well as equipment. So it's kind of the same what we're asking with, with volleyball.
Director McLaughlin?
And I make the motion primarily because I understood it right, is that registration has opened for other spring sports, and, and I want to give these students the best opportunity to be prepared to start playing as soon as they can.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments, Board Members? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Director Marvin, that abstains? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Madam Chair, I want to thank Deb Frederick, who's back there, who was our girl, girls' volleyball coach. Thank you. We know you'll be a key part of making this happen, too.
That's good to hear.
Yes. Great, our next item is an action item, School Board Compensation for Fiscal Year 26. This is, I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and if received, we'll open the floor for additional information and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 sets its compensation at $16,000 for fiscal year 2026, with an additional stipend of $1,600 for the Board Chair.
Move approval? Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I will remind Board Members that we've talked about this January 7th and January 25th, and that this resolution reflects no change or increase in the current Board compensation amount. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Item 9.1, other business, the ABCD is currently available for reference for our future School Board meeting agendas. Are there any items Board Members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Hearing none, our upcoming Board meeting dates are March 4th. Hearing none, our upcoming board meeting dates are March 4th at 5:30 p.m., March 18th at 5:30 p.m., both are regular meetings. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:59 p.m. Got it in before nine.
Thank you, Karen. I, I thought about it.